Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Oceanside City Council for August 21st, 2024. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and start with roll call, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
President.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
President.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Okay. I understand that we have the Baha'i here checking out a meeting for the city council. Can you raise your hand, the Baha'i? Okay, they must have stepped out then. All right. So we're going to go ahead and start with the invocation. Please rise. We do have Father Charles Wright, OSB of Prince of Peace Abbey. Father Charles.
Let us pray. Divine Creator of all that we can know and experience, we turn to you for the strength, the wisdom, and the prudence that only you can supply. We ask your concern for and your courage likewise and the wisdom in handling the affairs of this city, which is attracting so many residents and an increasing number of tourists. We ask specifically for aid and understanding for those who are unhoused and so many unable to lead lives with dignity that you intend them to have. We need not wait until Thanksgiving to offer you our gratitude for all the gifts you shower upon us and by them to call us to be of service, especially in city government closest to those affected, so that the greatest number may be granted the greatest good. We are grateful and we seek all of these in your divine name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. All right, just to inform you that item number 24 has been removed. Item number 24 has been removed. All right. And first, we have our proclamations and presentations. We're going to begin with Kelly from the San Diego Humane Society. She's got with her the pet of the month.
I have Miss Mango.
And who do we have here?
I have Miss Mango with me. She came into our Oceanside campus as a stray. A community member found her and brought her in. There was actually three other dogs. On June 19th, we suspect she's about a shepherd mix, 40 pounds, loves long walks on the beach, loves to say hello to everybody. I just met her today and she pretended like we knew each other forever.
Sounds like a perfect date. Walks, likes walks on the beach.
Who doesn't, right? We're in the perfect place for it. So right now, through September 10th, we are actually having 50% off of all of our adoption fees for our animals. That's for Clear the Shelters that is coming up on Saturday, September 7th. That is through MBC. It's basically nationwide. And us and all of our other rescue partners and coalition partner shelter partners within San Diego County are offering free waived fees for that day. It is Saturday, September 7th. I do have to mention, it is a very busy day, so just to tell you, if you are looking, look now because it's still 50% off. So all of our animals are either spayed and neutered, microchipped, vaccinated, free veterinary exam within the first seven days, free 30-day pet insurance. You really can't go wrong when you're trying to find the right animal. So just want to tell everybody, please check out our Oceanside campus. We have our Escondido, San Diego, and El Cajon. Our general hours are Tuesday through Sunday from 10:00 to 6:00. And our adoption hours are 10:00 to 5:00, except for Thursdays and Fridays for the summer weekends. For the summer, we have extended those until 7:00 because we're really trying to get these dogs adopted because right now we've seen such a large number of influxed medium-to-large sized dogs. Just in the past year and a half, our capacity has gone over about 150% when it comes to dogs. I think we have about 900 and something dogs at this time. So there's a lot. We also have a lot of programs and safety nets for people that do need help with low-cost vaccines, resources for spay and neuter. We have a pet pantry to where anybody can come during our general hours at any one of our campuses and pick up dog or cat food or even litter if they need it. It really just depends on how much supply we have, but that is an option for anybody that does need assistance. We are also inviting people that if they do need to surrender an animal, like I said, we're at full capacity. So if anything, they would definitely need to make an appointment and see if we can get their animal into our, for us to take care of their animal. There's also a home-to-home program, which is we basically tell people, if you are looking to rehome your dog and you want to bring it to us, please try this avenue first. It's free and to where you can put your animal's information up on that website and hopefully get them adopted in that state instead of having them come into a shelter environment, which let's be honest, it's not a normal environment. And we try our best, but a home environment is the best environment. So like I said, we have tons of animals, tons of dogs. We have a lot of volunteer opportunities. Even if you're looking to foster, we definitely need fosters because they're great to get animals out of the shelter and into homes. So at least we can see how they do because a lot of the percentage of the animals that come in are stray population. So that's all I have today, but thank you for everybody that's already said hello to Miss Mango. Again, she's available for adoption through our Oceanside campus and right now until September 10th, the fees are 50% off.
50% off? What a bargain, what a deal.
Really big deal.
This is the time to pick up a dog.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for always having us and appreciate you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a couple of proclamations. And the first one is, did you know that today is National Senior Day? National Senior Day? And woo-hoo, yeah. I can identify with that, right? National Senior Citizens Day. And so today we have Parks and Rec and ARP to help us celebrate that, so come on down. ARP? Yes. Matt, come on, Manny.
We've got some folks from ARP that are joining us this evening, and we're very excited to be one of the newest members of the age-friendly network. So glad to be here tonight.
Now that everybody's here, we have proclamation, whereas National Senior Citizens Day is observed annually on August 21st to recognize the positive contributions senior citizens make in communities across the United States and to bring awareness of the social health and economic issues that affect senior citizens. And whereas President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5847 in 1988, marking August 21st as a day seniors will be celebrated annually proclaiming that, "For all they have achieved throughout life and for all they continue to accomplish, we owe older citizens our thanks and a heartfelt salute." And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, multi-generational experiences and knowledge, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas four in five seniors will battle at least one medical condition or illness like arthritis or a heart disorder, and over a third federally subsidized housing is occupied by elderly people. And whereas City of Oceanside is one of the newest members of the ARP Age Friendly Network, yay, working with the San Diego Foundation, San Diego State Social Policy Institute, and the Center for Excellence in Aging and Longevity to develop an action plan to improve the livability of our residents. And whereas senior citizens make significant charitable donations, with over 15 million senior citizens volunteering in some manner, including Oceanside. I don't know about the millions and millions, but yes, including Oceanside. And whereas City of Oceanside Parks and Rec Department partners with many organizations such as Miracoast College, San Diego Seniors Community Foundation, and serving seniors to provide essential services, meals, classes, programs, and events for seniors at the Country Club and El Corazon Senior Centers. And whereas Parks and Rec Department provide 1,503 rides, 600 taxi vouchers to doctor's appointments, and shopping throughout the Go Oceanside Senior Transportation Program. And whereas each year, the City of Oceanside honors the Senior Volunteer of the Year. The nomination period is now open with the winner for 2024 to be announced at the Senior Expo on October 10th at the El Corazon Event Center. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2024 as Senior Citizens Day in the City of Oceanside. And I call upon all Oceanside citizens to celebrate older adults for their contributions, support their independence, and recognize their unparalleled value for our city. Thank you. So like this is everybody. This is Grandma, this is Auntie, this is, you know, just everyone that you know and maybe just the folks that you see in your grocery store, right? That you see almost every day or something. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it to... Okay.
I just want to commend you for honoring the seniors in this community. We're the pillars, we're the ones that made it happen and we're the ones that are keeping it going. And I have to say this. I feel blessed to live in Oceanside and it's only going to get better. And thanks to these people, it's only going to get better. On the negative side is there's a tsunami coming of people like me, generations. And sadly, we're the ones that are the homeless of first these days because of the cost of living. So we face many challenges, but I'm convinced that we can meet the challenges together. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Steve Burrell, Osceide resident and very, very active senior. All right. And for ARP, who would like to speak? Oh, you're speaking for ARP. Okay. Right. So I'm handing this to Manny. Manny, did you want to say anything else? Nope, that's it. So Happy Senior Citizens Day, Oceanside. Let's have a picture. Judy runs the senior program at El Corazon. So see her if you, you know, want to talk about seniors. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next. To celebrate and share this day in Oceanside, we have, well, I'm going to ask Michelle Geller to come down here, our manager for economic development. Come on down, Michelle, because Michelle is very instrumental in doing this proclamation. Okay, and we have, so this is a proclamation in honor of Cameron Fitness, 20 years of business in Oceanside. And who's here but the Cameron crew? And I don't know, are they going to get us to get up and do jumping jacks or something? Maybe. All right. That's a possibility. Get ready. And when I said crew, I mean, I meant really like, you know, a big boat, okay, of a crew. So we have Heather, right? Yeah, so Heather. Is that my name yet? So whereas Heather Cameron officially launched Cameron Fitness in Oceanside 20 years ago. And whereas Heather Cameron is a dedicated coach who inspires her Cam fam. You get that? Cam, Cameron family, Cam fam. Okay, okay, you guys got it right. To achieve their fitness goals and have fun while doing it. And whereas Heather is also a talented yoga teacher and advocate for healthy living. And whereas Heather is always thinking of creative exercises and never runs out of ways to torture the Cam fam. Okay. To feel love, I'm sorry, not torture. Whether it's a power hour, lunch crunch, boot camp, or strength class. And whereas Cameron Fitness Boot Camp happens year-round, rain or shine, in hot sun or pitch darkness. And whereas Cameron Fitness is a dedicated follower of City of Oceanside rules and policies, see, she pays attention to that, pertaining to outdoor fitness operations. And whereas Heather is a passionate ambassador for Oceanside as both a resident and business owner. And whereas Heather continues to motivate and inspire with her boundless energy, encouraging words, and perpetual smile. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2024 as Cameron Fitness Day. Of course, sharing with national senior citizens, right? But absolutely, in the City of Oceanside congratulating Heather Cameron on her 20 years of business in Oceanside, contributing greatly to the health and well-being of our residents. Congratulations, Heather. So here's this, and I imagine you're going to have a few words to say, right?
I definitely, I just want to thank everybody for being so supportive because of you, I get to do what I love to do and I get to share my passion with all of you. So thank you so much for always being supportive and there for me like I am for you. Thanks, you guys.
All right. So, okay, so picture, everybody somehow we're going to, so you're not going to, you didn't, you weren't going to yell out some like, you know, raise your...
We can move.
Okay, cool.
Hi, Esther.
Hi, how are you? How are you? So this is for you.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, ready, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was fantastic hug. Well, forgot for that one step, right? But thank you so much. Thank you, Heather. Thank you. Cam fam. Let's give it up again for Cam fam. All right, so this is, today is also employee recognitions. So come on down. Who's going to be kicking this off for us? And I'm asking all, the whole council as well as the directors to please join us in the well here.
Ready? All right. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members, department directors, and audience. It is with great pleasure that we present to you employees who have reached the praiseworthy accomplishment of 20 and 30 years of service with the City of Oceanside. When your name is called, please come forward. Erin N. Fox. Erin was hired on July 12th, 2004 as a maintenance worker one in the Water Utilities Department, Sewer Division. In March of 2006, Erin was promoted to a utility worker one, and again in September 2007 to a utility worker two. Shortly after, in February 2008, Erin began working as a wastewater plant operator in training, to which he successfully continued to advance and has now been in his current position as a wastewater plant operator three since November 2010. Erin is personable, friendly, and dedicated to the San Luis Rey operational team and the City of Oceanside. His willingness to help hard work and positive attitude make him a valuable part of the team. Thank you, Erin, for your hard work and dedication. Let's congratulate Erin Fox for 20 years of service to the City of Oceanside. Juan L. Soriano. Juan was hired April 11th, 2004 as a maintenance worker two in the Public Works Department. He then advanced to a maintenance worker three in September 2014. Juan continued his hard work and dedication to the department and promoted to his current position as a maintenance specialist in April 2016. Juan is dependable and a pleasure to work with. His leadership and commitment to helping his team have been a valuable asset to the department and the City of Oceanside. Thank you for your service and commitment to both the department and the community. Join me in congratulating Juan Soriano for 20 years of service. Next, we have 30 years of service. Gregory T. Staley. Gregory began his career with the City of Oceanside Police Department on June 12th, 1994, as a public safety assistant. He then promoted to a police officer in June 1995, to which he served for 15 years. In January 2010, Officer Staley promoted to police sergeant. During his recent service in the police department, Sergeant Staley has been leading command in the neighborhood policing team, school safety enhancement team, as well as the juvenile diversion program. He was also a range staff instructor within the firearms training unit and participated in the citywide safety committee meetings. After serving the community for 30 years, Sergeant Staley retired on July 18th, 2024. Sergeant Staley exhibited a professional demeanor, positive attitude, and was always a trustworthy leader to his patrol team. The community and the City of Oceanside, thank you Sergeant Gregory Staley for 30 years of service. That concludes tonight's Service Awards. On behalf of the City of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone recognized this evening. Thank you for your continued commitment to our community. Please join me in a round of applause.
Okay, again, we, item 24 has been pulled, has been removed, excuse me, has been removed completely from the agenda. So next, we have closed session report. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. The city council met earlier today in closed session at 3:30 to discuss item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations with three groups, Oceanside City Employees Association, the Marine Safety Employees Association, and the Western Council of Engineers. There's no action to report on item one under the Brown Act. Council also met on item two, conference with legal counsel on the workers' compensation case, ADJ 131, 63530, Sundberg versus City. There's no action to report at this time.
Thank you. Next are the consent calendar items, items number three through 23. Any requests to pull by the public?
We've had a request to pull item number 16, item number 18, and we did have one speaker that pulled all the items, so we will give them five minutes just to talk on all the items.
Okay. So let's go ahead and get started with item number 16. And that is staff recommends, oh, excuse me, is there a motion for the balance? So there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. So go ahead and start with item number 16, which is, "Staff recommends that the city council approve a public works agreement with Dave Bangs and Associates, Inc. in an amount of $584,459 with a contingency of $25,000 for the purchase and installation of replacement playground equipment at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park and authorize the city manager or designee to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents." And who is, who called the item?
We've had three speakers pull this item.
You want to go ahead and get started on the speakers?
Our first speaker is Joe Hill, to be followed by Christine G.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, City Council. Joe Hill, 25-year resident. Probably a broken record, but we're going to go anyway. Apparently, our city doesn't feel playground safety for our kids is unsafe and controversial enough to even consider one test, a different base for new equipment even in one of our schools. Despite proven scientific and medical studies alerting the world, not just Oceanside, to the overall safety issues and consequences, it's kind of like climate change denial. Not knowing the bidding process, I'm wondering why the price went from $543 with a $25 contingency up to $580 with another $25,000 contingency. So now we're up to $609,000. And I don't know what the bidding process is, but I guess that's the correct price. Maybe it's more or less for different surfaces. If asked, a contractor has to do that. This contractor does have a lot of playgrounds and has done a lot of playgrounds in Arizona. Can you imagine how hot the base surface they use is over there? We know MLK needs new playground equipment. You could almost have had it already installed and done after the first presentation back in June if we would have had some type of a new test surface to check, just to see how it worked. I just don't understand that part. It's not like it's going to be forever. It's something that maybe we need to try. Let's be the leaders instead of the followers and going with status quo. Maybe the company's not flexible enough to participate in trying to install a test surface. If so, shame on them. I understand that this was presented at the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, I'm sorry. And I don't think, and I could be wrong, if I am correct, I don't think that Diane Wookiee got to present her presentation to that group at all. I know there was some communication back and forth because she wanted to tell them what she had on her mind, but I don't think it ever happened. So that's, I think that's a problem. Anyway, I have two questions. Is there any difference in this project than when it was proposed back in June? If not, did we just sit on it for 60 days hoping it would be forgotten? And why is the price so high? And how many of you guys actually went down to the beach on a sunny day and put your barefoot on the playground surface to see how hot it was? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Gorman?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I would say, please say back to the drawing board for this. Over half a million dollars for this? No. Usually when there's something that kids are going to interact with, toy companies, they have kids kid test it. I don't think that would pass the kid test. I know from my experience bringing my grandson years ago to the playgrounds, he would always migrate to wherever there's anything natural, something growing, something alive. He wasn't interested in this plastic equipment. And I think over half a million dollars? No. And we need to start looking at natural alternatives, and there are certainly many available, but they weren't even presented. We only see these options for all different versions of these plastic things. And then I don't think it needs to be replaced. I was out there just now. I went to MLK Park before I came here. I took pictures. I'm sorry, I did, forgot to bring my phone in. But it's the surface that needs replacement because the surface of this, you know, this from rubber infill, it's all deteriorating. That's what the problem is there. The equipment itself, I don't think it needs to be replaced. So I think you just need to look at resurfacing it with something that is non-toxic and not put all this money, over half a million dollars, into something new. Right, thank you.
Thank you. And the last person is?
Ms. Dolan? Wendy? Wendy Dolan? Are you going to speak on this or is this one of your pass? Okay.
I marked all 26 items to speak on because there weren't any agendas left. So you're going to hear me say pass, but there are about three of them I'm going to speak on. And hopefully, you know, because within five minutes of the meetings, you know, the doors opening, all the agendas were no longer available to the public, so.
Can I ask you, Wendy? Can I ask you, Wendy, now that you've had a chance to look at the agenda, is there a particular one that you wanted to talk to?
Yes, there are several. There's three, and I'll, you know, I've got them marked if Mr. Navarro wants to correct or whatever, but that's my bit. Thank you.
Did you want to speak for up to five minutes on all the items?
No, but there are three that, or three or four that I am going to speak on, and now that I know what they are, because I could read through it. So I don't know how you want to call that, if you want to call my name, and I'll just yell out pass, just keep going.
We have another item with other speakers, so while they're speaking, come see me and I'll mark you on the items.
Thank you.
Yeah. Includes the speakers on this item.
Oh, okay. So is there a motion? Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Joyce.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate staff taking this back and taking it up. Unfortunately, I think I disagree with the current recommendation. I am very concerned about the long-term effects of children breathing in the fumes off the heated rubber surfaces, and to the extent that we do have an option outside of this, which is the wood chips, that's my preference. I do recognize also that it does have some additional maintenance, and we need to, as a council, address the needs in that space, too. But my motion would be to approve the plan with the change to wood chips as the play surface with the rest of it remaining the same.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that for discussion. Anyone else wanting to speak on this item? Councilmember Robinson?
Thanks. I don't like the wood chip idea. One, it's not, those that are disabled or in wheelchairs, it's difficult to move through and participate in, and I'm not going to support it, so thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Joyce?
Are wood chips considered ADA compliant?
Councilmember Joyce, Manuel Gonzalez, Director of Parks and Recreation, so yes, wood chips meet ADA accessibility. However, they need to be maintained to a certain level in order to be ADA compliant at all times. And we do not currently have that capacity with staffing, so that would be an additional cost, as you indicated.
All right. What I want to say is, I know that there are just these discussions regionally, in the state and nationwide, there are these discussions happening. As we know, get more and more information and more and more studies, there are some concerns that I have, so I'll go ahead and join in that. We may end up having another motion after this motion, but it is part of concerns that I have for youth. In the park, I think we used sand. There was just not a whole lot of discussion about what kind of materials should be in the playground. But now I know that there is more and more discussion, more and more debate, and as we move forward, if we could at least give the opportunity to have that discussion, have that debate, however it moves forward, to allow people to have that input is what I would appreciate as we move forward. So there's a motion and a second. Councilmember Weiss?
I was just going to say, I'm not aware of any schools that don't have the rubberized material for their play structure, so, school I work at. What do they have?
All right, there is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 3-2. Robinson, Weiss, no.
So the motion passes. Next is item number 18, and that is, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution creating standard homeless services agreement guidelines and approving a professional services agreement, called a PSA, with San Diego Rescue Mission, in an amount not to exceed $170,000 for the operation of the Navigation Center Outreach Program, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. How many requests to speak from the public?
We have two requests to speak on this item, from Rachel White and Wendy Bravo.
Okay.
And I understand Ms. Bravo does not want to speak on this item, but we'll hear from Rachel White. Yeah. Rachel, you're up.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, thank you so much for allowing me time to speak on this. I am a member of the Housing Commission for full disclosure, and when I was reading through this, my one question that I had was, didn't we discuss this in the Housing Commission? And I think there was a concern about not opening this topic to bids for the community that our Navigation Center serves. There was a discussion about people not feeling welcomed, or about negative interactions, and with the LBGTQ community and with others within our community who are very vulnerable, we discussed, I believe, having training sensitivity. And I would like to ask that this be sent back to the Housing Commission, or at least tabled, until we can have further discussion on it, because I truly believe that the amount that they're asking for is not the issue, it's the issue of whether or not they are fixing or addressing the needs of those who would rather walk away from the center because they had a negative interaction with someone that maybe could be avoided if there was proper training. And again, that training should be open to open bid and making sure that we find the best fit. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Wendy Bravo?
Thank you. I'm really glad to see about the safe parking program, project. Mr. Joyce, was that the idea that you brought up in a meeting, us to do with a safe place for the homeless to be able to use their cars? This is essential. We have such a high rape rate among women and men also, when they're alone out in the bush. And as we know, with the latest criminalization of sleeping in the open, these camps have been churned, they're bivouacking in where they're out of sight, but they're not gone. And of course, we don't want them to be, we don't want them to be driven away from the City of Oceanside to go die somewhere in despair, nor do we want them to be attacked, raped, and robbed while trying to bivouac in someplace makeshift.
So you're, are you speaking on all of your items now?
No, I'm getting a little windy, but I'm just trying to press the urge on, I'm sure that you will vote compassionately. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. Sorry, the machine in the back of the room on the left is a little bit wonky tonight, so that's how come my name was not entered. I notified the clerk already. What I wanted to bring to your attention is that the public has brought to my attention, to my attention, that the rescue mission has certain standards that may not be in line with the community standards, and also professional psychologists and sociologists that for those people who may be using the services. So I would recommend that this be reevaluated and be brought forward to a commission or committee to evaluate such, so it does fit within community standards.
About the outreach program?
Correct.
Okay.
So this way that it does meet with the outreach, because I've heard that, I don't know how much fact and fiction it is, but I have heard that is some of their outreach programs and things are religiously based and not based upon community standards. Thank you.
Thank you. And no other requests to speak? To the council. No lights. Councilmember Joyce?
I want to thank staff for the proposal, first of all. I just had a couple of questions, I'm not sure who to address them to. Thank you, Mr. Roman. When will this proposal get reevaluated, or how often are we getting data, just so folks know?
Councilmember Joyce, the agreement is set for one year, so it'll be evaluated every year.
Okay. And have they done this type of work, the rescue mission, have they conducted this type of work historically in the city at all? Have they done it before?
Councilmember Joyce, yes, they have. This was originally a component of the Motel Voucher Program. When they operated our Motel Voucher Program, we had a outreach component, and it was successful, so this is part, a continuation of it.
Okay. And then, I was a little confused by the report, it said, what is the service area? Because part of it says downtown beaches, and then it has service locations. What is the service area for the program in general?
So the identified service areas are identified locations that were based off of the different data points. One example is the point-in-time count that saw a high number out in that census tract, so we specifically chose that location for that reason, amongst others.
But will this, these staff members, and their three full-time staff, that's proposed in this proposal?
In the proposal, I believe it's, yes, three-point, I believe it's three.
Yeah.
Sorry, I made them.
And will they be on call? So will, like, somebody be able to call up a number and say, we have an individual that's looking for services? Is this going to become part of our two-in-one program? How does that work?
So not necessarily part of, Councilmember Joyce, the, it's not going to be directly connected with the two-in-one program, but it is going to be connected directly with the Navigation Center and the locations that were identified to be able to have the ability, and this is the community component of it, is they'll have the ability to call for services, to be able to do not just the intake, but the transportation to the Navigation Center.
I guess I ask that question because the, we want folks to have an expectation of what's going to happen, right? So they expect when they call the hot team, that they're going to get the hot team if they call this number. I guess, I'm not super clear on how those things shake out, so is it important to have these providers be very consistent in their work? Is consistency a big part of that?
Councilmember Joyce, yeah, it's very important, and part of the contract states that they will follow the COC guidelines in terms of the standards when it comes to outreach and data collection.
Okay. And will, are they accompanied by police officers, like the hot team, or are they?
Councilmember Joyce, no, they are going to be operating independently as their own outreach team.
Okay.
So this essentially is not replacing any other team, it's just adding resource to the city.
Okay. And then, I saw in the report that, and we heard from our Housing Commission, they recommended there be some type of training, because there have been concerns brought up to other entities that particularly our trans community doesn't feel safe at the San Diego Rescue Mission. Again, these are, these are from secondhand, so I'm not trying to put anyone down, but we just want to make sure all of our places, this is a city facility, we'll make sure everyone's safe in there. So it said in the report that there were, so it's not part of this contract currently?
So at this time, it is not part of any contract of our homeless service providers, however, the conversation in the Housing Commission was that we would at one point like to have it be part of the standards, but at this time, it is not part of this or any other contract.
I think that's all the questions I have, thanks.
Councilmember Weiss?
So we currently get a monthly update on the rescue mission's operations, and I believe they've been at or near capacity since they've opened. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I also understand that they do, currently do, an outreach program where they do make contact with individuals that they know that are out there. And part of what's in the report is that, part of this is to ensure that activities in progress are consistently documented and effectively managed. Would it be possible to add to that monthly report that we get, the number of contacts that they make with homeless? Not necessarily how many, I mean, if they're at full capacity, but if they're going to do this program, if nothing else, that they could just report, you know, in that same report, we don't have to add a new one, how many contacts they've made that prior month?
Councilmember Weiss, the part of the contract stipulates that they will follow the data collection standards that is guided by COC, and that is inclusive of the data collection that they'll be doing.
Perfect, thank you. And I'll move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a council, Councilmember Robinson?
Thanks. So real quick, just to this, the Mr. Knott's comment, are you aware of any religious tests that the San Diego Rescue Mission uses to provide before they allow services?
Councilmember Robinson, that's a good question. So, yeah, we track, we monitor the agencies, like all our other agencies, any documented complaints to the Housing Department, we take very serious, we follow up, and there's ongoing monitoring of the program. At this time, there isn't anything that we have determined that has any merit when it comes to the complaints, but yes, it's something that we're constantly monitoring, just like our other programs.
If I could just jump in, this contract specifically addresses that topic and prohibits the use of these funds to be used for any religious purposes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to ask a few questions first. Okay. So I read the last report, we get them monthly, I believe it's monthly, I'm trying to remember, yeah. And so the referrals to the Navigation Center are from the Housing Authority and the hot team, and I did read in that report that they, that it was also from the Rescue Mission itself. So it sounds like this is basically taking what's already happening, but maybe expanding it to three people?
So, Honorable Mayor, it would be enhancing the services to be able to not just expand the services, but enhance by adding transportation services, direct referrals from the community and community members. Part of adding those service points is so that we can have increased support when we have a need for help in areas where, for example, the library or the resource centers. If there's a request for help, they have the ability to respond, that would.
Right. So wouldn't that necessarily be to bring them to the Navigation Center, because there might, they may already be full? It would be to assist in, say, getting their meds, taking transportation services to get their meds and other things, IDs? I know that, you know, I've been on ride-along, and there's definitely transportation requirements that they have.
Yeah, so they would, part of the enhancement would be to have their onsite case managers be able to provide transportation services to other appointments to get to the next step of their housing plan.
Okay. How did you determine the places in the community, there's the, where they would be coming to pick folks up, potentially? There's the, the resource centers, Oceanside Main Street, the library, how were those determined?
Honorable Mayor, so just like I mentioned before, there was different data collection points that we used to determine the points. Part of it was at the request of, you know, certain staff, certain directors wanting that resource, or the ability to request that resource, but also having, like, the point-in-time count numbers, using the heat map.
Because it doesn't actually match the calls that I'm getting, like, where Because it doesn't actually match the calls that I'm getting, like, where folks are being seen in the community, that they, you know, folks would like to have contact them because maybe they're sleeping in their car, and, you know, they're, they need to, they probably need some services. So like, the east side, not a problem. I'm not sure it's a problem in Crown Heights. So how were those picked? And I guess a better question is, if those sites that are, that have been picked at this time, could they be changed if there are other places that are, actually have more frequent calls and frequent needs?
Honorable Mayor, yes, they, every year, we'd evaluate the program and.
I'm sorry, within the contract? So say, you know, the first month, it looks like, the calls are really coming from other places. Is there a way to, to be flexible, to be able to replace some of these places with another place for pickup?
Within the contract terms, you're asking if, just to clarify, you're asking if there's flexibility? Yes, that, there is flexibility. The determined locations was to ensure that there is enough areas of coverage to have the justification of increasing staff.
Because I will tell you, it's mostly in the eastern part of the city that I'm hearing that there's just not that much services. So when they, when somebody calls and says, you know, I, I, there's a homeless person on the street, and they've been there for a while, and I really feel like they need to be contacted because they need services. And if it turns out that that is a frequent, you know, more frequent place than, say, the east side of Crown Heights, or Libby Lake, or I guess it was John Landis, is it flexible enough to change those sites within the contract?
Honorable Mayor, yes, it is. Of course, it'd be at the direction of City Manager, City Manager's office. They are, the vendor or the operator is flexible. They're willing to work with us. We do meet with them on a monthly basis, and I'm sure that's something that is within the realm.
Mr. Borrego, I'd like to see that flexibility because it's not matching the calls that I'm getting, and I know the council are, I'm sure, also getting via emails or phone calls, things like that. So can we have flexibility in that? Because I'd hate to have the, the resource centers be, you know, the places where people would be picked up, and yet it's not really that, it's not really happening there.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, it sounds like we do have flexibility written into this contract. I understand the concern, and we'll certainly make sure that the resources are programmed where they're needed most.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Joyce.
Hopefully my last question for you. I saw in the, in the report that the city had not had any complaints that were sustained against San Diego Rescue Mission. Is that correct?
Councilmember Joyce.
Referencing the training.
You're referring to the report provided from San Diego Rescue Mission?
The staff report on this item.
Ah, so, yes, there had not been any reports, any complaints reported to the Rescue Mission.
Okay. Thank you. So to my, to my council colleagues, the problem with that is, we're talking about an individual who's experiencing homelessness, who's interfacing with the only shelter in town. Who are they supposed to report, like, report that complaint to? Do all, do most of the individuals know that the city is the actual one running because it says San Diego Rescue Mission on it? I just, what I'm concerned about with this item and our hands-off approach in general, and it's not a hands-off because housing, from my understanding, is that the housing staff doesn't want to support, it's hands-off because they, how many folks work on homelessness for the city?
City staff?
Six, yeah, city staff.
Well, Councilmember Joyce, currently, there are two staff that are designated for homeless services, but I would say that the whole department is involved in the services for homelessness.
But if we're not around, if we don't have city staff around in these spaces, leading this work, then we don't really know. Because those complaints won't get heard. Those complaints won't get to our Housing Department. I'm just, we can't use it as a shield to not make sure these, these places are safe. I, I feel strongly that the Housing Commission made a great recommendation to include a basic level of training to make sure that it's a safe place for, for all Oceansiders that are experiencing homelessness. Are you open to adding that training to your motion maker?
At this point, I would say no, because that did come up when we awarded the contract, and they do provide training. They stood up here in front of us and said that they do provide training. And the referrals to the, the Rescue Mission doesn't self-refer, it's usually the hot team. So if there are complaints, they'll know. So at this point, I'm not, not interested in adding something today that would add to potentially a cost increase in this contract. If you want to refer it back to them and have them evaluate that and come back with a new cost, I'm open to that, but I'm willing to move forward as it is.
So I'll just register my concerns, and then we can vote. Again, the accountability of contracting out these services with the most vulnerable people living in our city is a big concern for me. If we want to actually make a dent in the homeless, the homelessness issue, which affects every single one of us, we've got to invest in hiring some folks to work on it directly. And we're already overworking the few that we have assigned to this. And as we're adding services across the city, we need people to manage those appropriately and to make sure that the folks that would register a complaint have someone to actually complain to. So that's, that's my concern is moving forward. I will be watching this program very closely, and I'm concerned about it, but I hesitate to vote against adding any kind of a resource for, for our city in this, in this desperate time.
All right, for clarification, Mr. Mullen, I, I did not read the contract to include flexibility. Is there flexibility in there as the motion is, has been made and seconded?
Well, the scope of work does have a section on evaluation. So the program will be evaluated based on its ability to meet the stated objectives, including the number of individuals engaged, assessed, referred, and housed. It will be evaluated based on its adherence to program standards and compliance requirement. That coupled with your right to terminate, I think, gives you flexibility to agree to it.
In terms of these centers that have been.
Yeah, I think you have flexibility because you have the right to terminate the contract at any point in time for no reason.
No. Okay, so my concern is more because it's not matching the complaints that I'm getting. I'm getting complaints from eastern part of our city, basically saying, look, all these services are on the coast, you know, we never get any, anything over here, I make a lot of phone calls, and nothing happens. So I believe that if it's, you know, the centers that are being, that have been included here as identified, especially the resource centers, I don't, I've never gotten any complaints from them. There's the occasional one person that has found their way to these, to these communities. I mean, they're, they're lower, lower-income neighborhoods, and it's not where they want to be. So I just want to make sure that there is that flexibility. Mr. Borrego, you're, you're saying yes, right? Okay, thank you very much. I see no other lights. This does fill a gap that we do not have, which is the after-hours and the weekends that there, that we can't get anybody to make contact. And, and for that reason, I am concerned that we, we haven't had, and the LGBTQ Resource Center, North County Resource Center, has offered free training. It's not a cost issue, but I would really like to see the diversity training included at some point, because I, I think it is important. There are sometimes folks that have never been to Oceanside, and, and they're surprised that we have so many different cultures and, you know, communities in Oceanside. And it, and basically, it is a requirement for every kind of government contract. So the first time this happened, I thought it, it should have been in the contract and not coming from the, from a public member speaking, saying, okay, this should be, should have been included, and then the representative from, from Rescue Mission saying, no, I won't do it. I felt instantly, like, why not? It's not a big deal. I mean, this is something that if, if we were more homogeneous, and it was just, like, you know, no communities of color, it's like, okay, I guess that makes sense, right? But we are talking about folks that, and, and looking at the numbers, yes, it's, the numbers still say that there are more white folks that are homeless than communities of color, but it's still very necessary, I believe. So I am going to support this, but I do have that concern. I hope it will be addressed sometime soon, like, hopefully within this year. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, and we're done now with the, with the consent calendar, right? We don't have.
Ms. Bravo still has her time.
Ms. Bravo, are there any other items you wish to speak to? Wendy? Are you, are you done then? Yeah, I think you have maybe two or three minutes left.
What I'm hearing here is a kind of a parsing out in terms of geography where these problems arise, and since we have a fluid population, so to speak, of homelessness, you know, you have the notion of, of parking, you know, getting a minute or a roof there, you have, like, a pickup or a station where they stop by, and the sense that you're playing whack-a-mole. This is a problem, and it, it has to be better designed, I think, although I, I know that the council is heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're on to general items. Again, item number 24 has been removed. We're on item number 25, which is a city council item. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to accept and appropriate the grant award from the California Interagency Council on homelessness in the amount of 11,000, 11, excuse me, 11 million, 11.4 million dollars. And I want to say congratulations, Sal, for getting us that fantastic grant from the state. One of, what was it, seven? One of seven throughout the state. And number two, approve the professional services agreement, PSA, with interfaith community services for fiscal year 2024, 2025, with the option to renew the PSA for two additional one-year terms for 1.4 million dollars per year. Number three, approve the professional services agreement with the city of Carlsbad in amount not to exceed 4.3 million dollars over a three-year period for the administration of subcontracts with encampment resolution funding, ERF, program service providers. And that, and this, this grant was written jointly by, with, or actually written by Oceanside to include the city of Carlsbad as a partner, correct? Mr., yeah. Four, approve a provisional management analyst position for a three-year term. Five, authorize the city manager or designate to execute all relevant documents and agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents. Report by, okay, so those are all the action items that are on this. So first, we're going to start with a report by Sal Salvador Ramon, Senior Management Analyst. Mr. Ramon?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Looking for the clicker here, but use a mouse. So yes, this is an exciting time. This is a, a lot of work coming, and today I am coming to the diocese to recommend adoption of the resolution to accept the ERF grant funds in the amount of 11.3 million for the implementation of the encampment resolution grant, program. So as, as Honorable Mayor mentioned, the staff recommends the five items. I, I won't go, I won't go over them, she just spoke on them. A little bit of background, so this is the third round that was released, and it was part of a rolling fund, a total amount of 400 million dollars. At the time that we were submitting our application, there was about 300 million dollars available. The eligible applicants at this time were the local jurisdictions, COC, continuum of care, and prioritized encampment areas that had property that included state right-of-way. So the funding objective for this grant opportunity really focused on addressing encampments that had, one, partnerships, and, two, the ability to provide streamlined processes and streamlined pathways to housing. The application required us to choose a location, one, one encampment area. So what we did is, we chose the area between the city of Carlsbad and city of Oceanside. It is the Buena Creek area. It is from the Vista Way all the way through the five, along 78. There's various encampments within that area, and we're calling it Buena Creek Encampment Area. The grant activities contracted different partners to create a multidisciplinary team to provide an array of robust services that would bring them onsite to the encampment area. And like I said before, the goal of this program is to provide pathways to housing, but also enhance the services from both jurisdictions and bring them to the encampment area for the encampment resolution program. So the four agencies that we've partnered with, and the four vendors and partners that we're working with are programs and services that have operated already, whether it's with the city of Oceanside or the city of Carlsbad. And what we did in this proposal is really bring forward the successful programs that we operate and use the funding to either fill in the gaps to enhance or leverage so that we can expand the services to bring to Oceanside. In this PowerPoint slide, you see the different services that are either enhanced or expanded to be operated in Oceanside. Our four partners, sorry, I should have mentioned, the four partners are Whole Person Care Clinic, La Posada with Catholic Charities, Community Resource Center, and Interfaith Community Services.
And this was part of the grant that you, that you included the partners? Is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the proposal was, or the partners are the agencies that were listed in the proposal. The milestone timeline was adjusted. We still haven't received the grant agreement from state. They're transferring the funder from CalICH to HCD, so we've had some delays, and we have adjusted our timeline to account for that. The one thing I do want to highlight with this milestone timeframe is, the goal of this program is to not just have measurable results, but also tangible, viewable results. The goal of this program is to really address 100% of the encampment residents within the encampment area. So hyper-focusing on this target area, addressing the needs of the individuals, and working with the multidisciplinary team to provide those pathways to housing. Here's a quick snapshot of the fiscal impact, the allocations to the different agencies, as well as the allocations amongst the two jurisdictions. At this time, I also want to make sure I recognize our partnering jurisdiction, jurisdiction, city of Carlsbad, Director Mandy Mills and her staff in the Housing Homelessness Department really worked with us to. really worked with us to put a comprehensive proposal together that allowed us to receive the funding that I'm presenting to you today. And again, so our staff is here to recommend that city council adopt a resolution to accept and appropriate the funds in the amount of 11.3. Approve the professional service agreement with Interfaith for fiscal year 24, 25, in the amount of 1.1, with two renewal agreements or optional agreements. Approve the MOA with City of Carlsbad in the amount not to exceed 5.3 for a three-year period of administration with their subcontractors for the encampment resolution program. Approve a provisional position of a management analyst to oversee the administration and oversight of the project program, and authorize city manager or designate to execute all documents and agreements upon receipt of all supporting documentation.
Okay, thank you. So how many, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. We have four speakers.
Okay, great, let's get started.
Our first speaker is Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Sunny Soto, to be followed by Rachel White. So please come on down to the podium.
I'd like to make a bid here for more legible PowerPoints available to the public. Most often times, they're virtually illegible, and, you know, it's real high in the snooze factor in here. I think it's catching on to the dais sometimes. You know, I can't, I'm not in a position here to do a market analysis here, but it's been my experience and observation for these types of things, that they can get administration-heavy. I don't know how big Carlsbad's encampment problem is, but we now start thinking of people as people, including the audience here, who's come down quite kindly to weigh in their own decisions on how they're going to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny, Sunny Soto.
Hello, thank you all for your time today. Sunny Soto, Oceanside resident, Lusanneo native, heavy activist in our house's community. So for this, first of all, congrats on getting this grant. That's really awesome. It's nice to have funds to be able to do things with. I have concerns about a few things. My main concern, I'm looking back towards the 20, maybe 20, 2020, 2021, all those years blur together, but we had our encampment here on Oceanside Boulevard. It got swept up, and the way that that happened, we had a lot, a lot of police on site, and it causes a lot of friction within our house's community. My other concerns are how we, hoping that we have compassion and humanity when we're out there sweeping these camps, and it's not just waste management coming through to make sure that people are herding into these hotel voucher programs that are a Band-Aid over the actual problems and lack of affordable housing, lack of resources, when we are putting them into, you know, transitional home and hopefully streamlining into the permanent homes. I want to know where these permanent homes are and where they can sustain this affordably, coming from nothing on the street to hopefully being and getting their life together, getting empowered enough to be able to live alone in some type of permanent housing, wherever those fictional housings are. My other concern, too, is with Carlsbad. Now, from what I know, being on the front lines, the Catholic people who are helping you all with this grant and the 50-bed shelter that they have there in Carlsbad, again, is religious ran, so with, again, with the San Diego Rescue Mission, the blurriness with the lack of training around inclusivity, diversity, really, you know, steers people away who maybe aren't Catholic, who maybe aren't Christian, who don't feel comfortable in those areas, Muslims, Jews, LGBTQ people who have religious trauma. All of these things will really deteriorate people from seeking out the services or saying no when someone's trying to get them through these transitional housing. I also see up there, through some of the outreach things, that you're, I don't see any like trauma-informed care, and really focus on that because helping people get the need to even want to be a part of these programs is going to come from a compassionate side and not just trying to herd people in numbers and clean the streets for a better view for your own personal needs, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel White?
I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the City Council for discussing this issue, and the Housing Commission, the Housing Department of Oceanside. I know how hard you guys worked when you presented this to the Housing Commission. I support this because I know too many people who are struggling, and I know of a single mother and her daughter who have literally gone from a hotel to sleeping on someone's couch, to sleeping in a makeshift garage that has been turned into some type of a dwelling unit. We need services, wraparound services, that can help people with trauma, that can help people who have jobs, who just can't afford the rent because it's too expensive, who are hardworking, good people who grew up in Oceanside, whose parents were military and contributed to our community. So 100%, I agree with the good work that's being started here. Is it perfect? Probably not, but I'll take working with imperfection with a good goal over perfection that never happens.
Thank you. And GT, Horton?
Good evening. I just have a few questions about this grant. I mean, one, congratulations for getting it, but two, in terms of encampment resolution, I'm just wondering if it, if we're sweeping up encampments that are in visible places, how do we make sure that that doesn't just push encampments into, you know, less visible places? So for example, I volunteer with several environmental nonprofits here in Oceanside, and we find when we do our river cleanups, like San Luis Rey River, El Corazon, or Quarry Creek, that a lot of these encampments just find their way into these habitat preserves because if they're out in the open, then they're getting swept up. So I mean, that's not really solving anything. So I just want to ask staff, how is that taken care of? And then I want to echo what Sunny said as well, that when this type of sweeps and these, you know, resolutions are done, that it's done in a compassionate manner that's respectful to those who are essentially being relocated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, no other requests to speak from the public. So, Mr. Ramon, do you want to go ahead and respond to some of the questions that were had? I know that this also creates transitional housing opportunities, temporary housing, the gap. It does create, it does address its gaps that we have from having a shelter to having a final solution, a final home. So would you like to speak to that?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, I very much love to speak to it. This is an exciting program for me. One, because it is, it is a program that is trauma-informed. We have contracted services that make it part of that, their scope of work. But two, address the general comments of a sweep, it's not a sweep. This is, there's no law enforcement involved. These are all professionals who are going in and doing the work and will not move on until each individual is served and moved on to the next step in their housing plan. To address the shelters and the concerns over the religious affiliated shelters, there is resources that would be brought on through this program to offer non-congratulate shelter setting options for those who may not be suitable for congratulate shelter setting.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other questions where?
The visible, invisible was brought up. I know there was a, there's, this is about a larger area, maybe you want to speak to that.
So the, the comment was the sweeps in terms of pushing people to more, an area more visible, there are no other areas. It is strategically designed to focus, hyper-focus on one target area, and we wouldn't be pushing people away. We'd be focusing on addressing every single one. 100% of the individuals would be served and provided the resources that they need to get to their next housing plan.
And how many people is the target?
So the, based on the data that we found, it was 200 would be served through the program.
Okay. Okay, we may think of other questions. Thank you very much. So to the council, Councilmember Robinson.
Okay, so just based on what you said, Sal. So somebody, you reach out to somebody in that encampment area and they say, no, like it the way I got it, thanks, no, don't need you. What happens? That's a touchy screen over there, you really need the pencil.
Councilmember Robinson, you promised you'd be nice to me, not asking me the hard questions, but that's a very good question. So you're, what, just to rephrase, what is it if there are few services? Right? So the timeline, we essentially have three years to focus on this area. We're a little bit more aggressive in focusing on addressing 100% of the encampment, but the idea is that we continue to provide and offer, and by having the array of different services, like street medicine, like substance abuse, brought to the encampment area as opposed to referring out or giving them informational flyers, it's, it's really focusing on bringing the, the needs and addressing the needs of all the individuals to the encampment area.
Mr. Borrego, did you want to say something?
Yeah, if I, if I could add to that, I mean, I think it's important, as Sal mentioned, it is important to reiterate, there is not a law enforcement component to this grant. However, that does not mean that if there is people that are openly engaging in illegal activity, that we're just going to completely back off the area. That would be, I think, counterproductive. So clearly, the goal is to get people into housing, to offer them their services, but that doesn't mean that folks out there get a pass to do whatever they want to do either. So it's a delicate balance. You know, I do think, as Sal mentioned, and I know you all know this, but it oftentimes takes several contacts with an individual before they're willing to accept services. And given the three-year timeframe of the program, we're going to have, you know, the ability to do that. But again, that doesn't mean that we're just going to turn a blind eye to things that may be detrimental to the neighborhood, that may be taking place out there at the same time, so we'll continue to keep an eye on that.
Right, and there's, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say, and that wasn't, I wasn't worried about the people doing illegal stuff, I'm just saying, what is to keep new people from coming in? So now the word's out that, hey, if you go there, you get medical care, you get, and we start seeing a shift of people going to that area. Is the, is the ultimate goal to clean, for lack of a better word, to clean this encampment area out and not allow new folks in? I mean, how do we, how do you stop the influx? What, how does that happen?
Certainly, and I mean, you know, obviously, one very important component of this program is monitoring the effect and effectiveness of it. You know, our intent isn't for this to become a magnet because of the services that are being offered out here. To answer your other point, yes, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is we're dealing with an area that is very biologically sensitive. We have a lot of habitat area in there, and we have been working, as I'm sure you're aware, to secure some of that area and do a lot of cleanups of a lot of the trash and the debris that is down in the creek area, including some of what should be protected preserve areas. So clearly, there is also a concurrent interest to keep that area clean as well because it is a sensitive area that needs to be kept clean. I mean, fact of the matter is, and we have spent a lot of resources pulling trash and garbage out of the creek, which is not a good thing when you have sensitive habitat and sensitive waterways in that area. So yes, that is part of the goal as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson, I will add that as far as the program-wise, the, the component to the encampment resolution fund is the administration of the by-name list, which is a popular term that is used by all providers, and having the funds to build the infrastructure to create that so that we are serving the ones that we've identified, nothing more, nothing less, just addressing the ones that are currently in the encampment and hyper-focusing on the individuals that we've identified through that list.
No other lights at this time, but I do want to go ahead and say, I remember the night that I got a call from the governor's office saying that, well, we won the grant. And I contacted Mr. Borrego and said, did you know about this? And of course, he didn't know. And, and so I'm like, well, what is it? 11.4 million dollars? What is that? We have had so many problems in this area, so many problems, so many calls, and our efforts have been collecting all the trash, cleaning up, and then they come back. And it's very, very frustrating to staff, it's very, very frustrating to the community. And for a grant to be very specific on encampments and to change that, to change that whole kind of cycle and break that cycle, in fact, offer the next step in housing, not, not, not just shelter, but temporary housing, and to, I don't know if I'd use the word clean, but remove the desire to have folks live there, is, and you have three years to prove that you can do that. You are in, in, you are like going to establish like new territory here. The city's being able to do this in combination with Carlsbad and all the encampments that we have, if we can, you know, learn from this situation and the kind of services that we need to have and partnerships we have to have. And of course, the ultimate piece, of course, is building more housing because, you know, we can hold people up for, for just as long, but you got to have that final step. But I want to say, when I first talked to you, Sal, that you said, I worked so much harder on this than my master's, what was it, the, your, your thesis? Yeah. And I mean, I don't think we've ever received 11.4 million dollars for an encampment project. So this, to me, is amazing that our staff was able to win this, that they're, that we're going to be able to really put, not just dense, but huge, you know, like just, I'm just so excited. I'm just so very, very excited. So Councilmember Joyce wants to say something here. And I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Is that what it is? Yeah. Move adoption and approve the agreements.
So I just want to also thank staff, this is, this is an incredible program. This follows the continuum of care, and that's frankly what we should be doing all over the city. So when we talk about folks might be coming here because they need medical service in the space, they need connection to housing, that's a real concern because there are people like that all over our city, and that's what we should be doing. This is, this is how much it costs to really get people out of the cycle of living in this space. And we have, we, and we will see the effectiveness of it, but I think it's important to note, this is just like a, if you, if you put a program in, one small split, it's just to understand that the homeless population of this city and of this region are not of an island, that folks don't just stay in one place all the time. So there are so many, there are only so many places where people can sleep. So if we don't expand efforts across the city, I think there is a chance that it's going to look like this isn't working when we actually are going to be helping individuals, but it's, the, what you see may not look like it's doing what it should. That's what I worry about with, we, we go in to evaluate these programs on the back end, is that we're trying to do the right thing in this very small sector of space, but the, the need continues to grow every day because the cost of housing is so freaking high. This is, the most expensive way to do it is on the back end. We've got to also invest in long-term solutions for housing, and we have to prevent folks from going into homelessness. So I'm excited about this program, and I appreciate all the work that was done to get us to this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keim. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keim.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work, Sal. It's great. As we know, it's been reported that billions upon billions of dollars spent on homeless in the state, and we haven't been able to track that and find out what results happened. I do not, in Oceanside, do not want us to be another example of that. We're going to spend this money, and I want to see what's happening, and I want results. We actually have to have an impact. And so I want to figure out, you know, the by-name list is, you know, who's having challenges, where are they from? I think in Oceanside, that's a challenge for years, decades. I think we've really shouldered the burden of the homeless crisis here, and we got to make sure that other cities pull their load and see if someone just came here for services, where are they from, how do we get that city involved, how do we get family involved? But again, I want to reiterate this, I do not want to waste $11 million of taxpayer dollars. And this, you know, something earlier, when we're doing this for three years, you know, if someone resists services for three years, we have to be able to address that effectively. And that's the challenge right now in California. If someone wants to use fentanyl and steal a certain amount under $950, we can give tickets every day, and we can't break a cycle with giving somebody a ticket. You can give 30 tickets, and then you get a misdemeanor warrant. We can't book someone into custody and help them into treatment with that. So we can give people a piece of paper every day, and that's where it stops, and when you do that, you cannot break the cycle of addiction or mental health, and that's the challenge. I want us to have a real impact and help make people's lives better, and this is not about putting people in custody, this is about helping them break that cycle and make their life better. But again, I want us to actually be the example in California of how you make a dent on the homeless crisis and how you do it right. And I know we got great staff, and I think we will, but our residents deserve it. I mean, we have, you know, whether it's 400 or 500 unsheltered homeless and service-resistant, and we open to shelter, and we're trying everything we can to be compassionate and bring them services, but we also have to be compassionate for the 175,000 other people in our city that want to live a safe life, want to run their businesses, and want to raise their family here. So thank you for your hard work, and I'm looking forward to this, actually, making some progress in our city.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, I agree with what the deputy mayor said. I just want to make sure that as you make these contacts, that it doesn't get to the point where I'm just going to pack up and move to the San Luis Rey River. So however you report metrics back to us, anything that's helpful to, you know, over time, not that we need to get something monthly, but you know, over time, I would like to see some report back to us about how effective the program is, and I will second the mayor's motion.
I will say that on the ballot will be Prop 36. That will be addressing theft and drugs and different penalties, raising the, raising the bar in terms of ensuring that people do get treatment and forced to get treatment. I was a deputy public defender for 20 years, and the best, the best drug treatment program was through the courts, it was Drug Court. It was 85%, 85% successful, and that was a one-year, two-year program, not a three-week, not a, you know, six months. It was real, and it had alumni, and it had so much support, and I hope that that, that will be coming back to us once Prop 36 is adopted or passed by the, by the people of the state of California. Councilmember Joyce.
For the folks that are dealing with addiction on the street, and they are asking for somewhere to go for sobering facilities, do we have any of those facilities in North County at this time?
Councilmember Joyce, one of the contracts is with Interfaith Community Services, who have a program. It's not within the city of Oceanside, but our funding would allow us to make direct referrals to that program.
Right. So I just get, I get frustrated by hearing this, this overarching complaint that we're pouring millions and millions into, into services that aren't working, and we don't have places for people to go. So, you know, there's nowhere for them to live after the short-term shelters in our city, and there's nowhere for folks to go get sober if they're asking for it. I read a report after report about that backend of this being the issue, and so if we want to be serious about addressing this problem in the real future, we need to actually fund places for folks to live that need that interim housing after this.
Right, and it's not a housing issue, it's an affordable affordability issue. A lot of families are getting pushed out because of the cost of housing, not because that, that housing unit is not available, but it's, you know, there physically, but it becomes unavailable because the rents have gone up. The state has done the 10%, no higher than 10% per year, but that still seems to be just more than folks can pay. So this is not just one, you know, this, this can't just be the thing that we base, whether this is successful or not, this one program, we have other things that we have to do. This is, this is going to be with other agencies, including, including law enforcement. So I am very much looking forward to seeing this piece of it change in terms of being able to provide the kind of services that we, we haven't been able to provide, and to finally get to folks who have finally said, yeah, I've reached my bottom. There's, it can't be a bigger, you know, this is a bottom, living there. So, thank you. Deputy Mayor Keim.
All right. I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Joyce, we have to have more services. However, Oceanside, we used our Measure X funds to open a sobering center. We ended up closing it because we couldn't fill it, and that's the challenge. I've seen it day after day as a police officer. It's hard to take that first step, especially in something as powerful as heroin or fentanyl, to actually get into treatment. That's why we need that extra tool to help someone break that cycle and take them to that treatment. That's what we didn't have with our sobering center, and that's what we need in the future, is to actually bring them there, help them get that, and give them that extra push, that right now, they're not getting with just a ticket, and that's where we're failing. And I fully support of more substance abuse treatment facilities, but we actually have to have a tool to get people into them, instead of just asking them time after time after time, like I used to do. It's, I'm very familiar with the challenge, and it's very real.
Well, we do have our San Diego County District Attorney, Summer Stephan, who will be coming to the next council meeting, and will be talking about Prop 36, and that is really going to turn these voluntary programs into required programs if you have a law enforcement-related issue and you have, you qualify because you have stolen more than a certain amount. The penalties are higher, and it is meant to get people into treatment. This didn't work because it was voluntary, it was also during COVID. It's unfortunate that the McAllister Institute didn't continue. In fact, after it closed, other cities in North County, when I was having my mayor's meetings with North County, other North County mayors lamented that we should have told them about it, maybe they could have sent some of theirs here. And again, is this, there's that question, is it a regional or is it a city? And at one point, and how can we work together? Because we need to be able to make every dollar count, make every person count, every person's success count. So, no other lights, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, congratulations, Sal. Okay, not with a drink, though. Thank you, Sal. Okay, public communications and off-agenda items, item number 26, Mr. Leighton.
Councilmember Joyce, at the last meeting, you finally seemed to acknowledge that high-density stack and pack over development is, what do you know, something Osiders are concerned about. You said, now that people are finally understanding what the general plan is, maybe we should get more public involvement and have at least one more public meeting. Better late than never, Mr. Joyce. Then, although the council has avoided redoing the general plan for decades, now Councilmember Robinson sits up and says, no, we must stop kicking the can down the road, let's vote as soon as we can. Really? Well, nevertheless, right or wrong, that was your stated opinion, Mr. Robinson. What I don't get is why you would then vote, yes, let's have another public input session. So what is it that you stand for? Is it what you said or how you voted? Just wondering. And then, the same meeting, after hearing all those people from Loma Alta unanimously say, say that the proposed development for their neighborhood is counter to everything about Loma Alta, and that it will devastate the neighborhood, you voted. Only Mayor Sanchez voted no, but then Councilman Keim jumped down her throat, indicating that she had no right to vote for what the people wanted. Really, Mr. Keim, who told you she had to vote yes? Developers, the BIA? Who's giving you your marching orders? Let the developer sue. On what grounds will he sue? The neighbors who clearly want to fight to save their home property value and their neighborhood could easily prove in court, this hideous piece of crap does not fit in with the rest of the Loma Alta neighborhood. I guarantee the developer would modify and make it less abhorrent if confronted with a lawsuit. Mr. Keim, you indicated that the mayor was just voting no to get elect, excuse me, the mayor is voting for what the people want, and that, you allege, is a scam just to get votes. I hate to break the news to you, Mr. Keim, but that is how democracy works. It's no scam. And on the third edition of the all-new All-Oceanside podcast, www.oecidbdc.com, that the third edition just went up yesterday, we talk about what we heard from longtime harbor locals about what they thought of last weekend's mayhem. They tell me, they told me about the Harbor Patrol, which only patrolled the harbor and which knew all the goings-on and who should be there and who should not be there. And unfortunately, it was disbanded in 2009, so the OPD could grow its sphere of influence. The harbor locals say they rarely see a cop in the harbor now. They tell us how all the harbor locals know that these gatekeeper security guards can often be found just sitting in their car, playing Game Boy or whatever it is, whatever it is. But most important, they want the Harbor Patrol back. I urge the city to do a survey of the harbor locals to see if what I'm saying and what they told me is correct. Meanwhile, we also have an interview with Rodney McGough, the mayor of the so-called homeless encampment that was displaced three years ago near, you know, Smart and Final and Oceanside Boulevard. He tells us what he thinks about San Diego Rescue Mission, the HOT Team, the OPD, and he mentions specific council members by name, you'll have to tune in to see who it is, www.oecidbdc.com, Edition 3. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Arlene Hammerschmidt? Oh, Councilmember Robinson, yes. Councilmember Robinson. Are you asking for a point of privilege, personal privilege?
I am, Mayor, thank you. So just to answer his question about why the workshop vote, because the, the details of the workshop changed from just prior to being happening before staff finished their work, to the fact that staff would be allowed to finish their work and bring together a finished product before we did the workshop. So that's why that vote happened that way.
Ms. Hammerschmidt? I don't know where you're going, oh, there.
Good evening. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Rurlish Fire Mountain, customer service and questions. My most positive customer service is dealing with our city clerk's office online and in person. The best in-person customer service I've experienced is from Development Services. Effective customer service creates community trust in the city. My most negative experience has been with the city manager and city attorney in regard to my official complaints of December 2022 and June 2024. I've given deep thought to this in the past two years, and these are my recommendations to improve city customer service. Number one, a paradigm shift. Place the community at the top of every department's management chart. Number two, written discrimination complaints independently and completely investigated with findings reported in writing directly to the person who filed the complaint. Number three. Number three, an official complaint form on the city website to be received by city clerk's office. Please don't invite me or members of the public to bring any specific complaints to the attention of city manager or park and recreation director. It has not worked for over two years, direct contact with city administration is intimidating for most Oceanside residents, particularly low-income, at-risk, of color youth sport group leaders who fear city reprisal.
Please address the council.
Intimidation is a barrier to reporting discrimination. Four, when people lodge a verbal complaint, direct and encourage them to submit what they just said in writing or email to the city clerk's office and give them their email and phone. Institute policy changes that include accountability and measures which prevent even the perception of unethical acts. Number six, an email or text customer service survey to everyone who emails or phones the city. Just pull that, please, Robert. Unanswered questions equal failed customer service. Here's mine, just take them off. Unanswered questions, is it legal for city staff to collaborate on the scope of contract, investigating consultant's contract, and omit allegations of discrimination? City manager stated that his staff collaborated with Bob Lee's in creating the scope of his contract. Residents perceive collusion. Collusion contains the element of deceit. Who was deceived? The residents were deceived. We believe that all allegations in my December 22 complaint would fully get investigated, but discrimination was omitted from the scope of consultant Lee's contract, and dash that hope. Why does our city manager evasively state that for the above reasons, the city will not be investigating my complaint of June 28, 2024, instead of specifically listing or numbering his reasons? Why was investigating discrimination omitted from Lee's contract scope? Was omission of the discrimination allegation intentional? If so, isn't that also discrimination? How can any former human resources administrator not recognize discrimination when reading these words? Marginalization and mistreatment, disrespect, feelings that other groups got higher priority? Why did Bob Lee's not follow Lee's Wayne Godden and I gave him? Why does the city continue to treat many of our residents of color as undeserving third-class people? Why was Lee's allowed to incompletely investigate that some sport user groups were given undeserved permit priority over equally qualified sport user groups of color? Was it legal for city staff to collaborate on the scope of investigating the consultant's contract and omit allegations of discrimination? Is it ethical to hire a former colleague to investigate allegations of discrimination in a department you have a stake in because you oversee it? Is the city more interested in protecting staff from complaints than ending discrimination by staff? If you can't see possible illegal and unethical actions, aren't you part of the problem? It's past time to improve how the city interacts with residents. Please, make Oceanside governance.
Thank you very much.
You can trust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is All right. Next is item number 28, which is, I'm going to go to 28 requests by me to make appointments to or motions for removal from some or all of the city's advisory groups. I'm going to go ahead and move approval of the list that I have recommended dated today, which was revised, basically took one person off. I'm going to make that motion.
And we do have public on this item.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion, a second. Who is it?
We have five speakers on this item.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Ken Leighton, to be followed by Sunny Soto.
Look at, can you hear me on the mic? Can you come in a little closer on it? I'm going to use that to guide my talk. I wish to object to the continuance of Shelley Parker on the Oceanside Housing Commission, primarily because of, you know, what I consider to be a gross miscarriage of duties there in conducting municipal surveys among our mobile home parks. And there's a problem with these ad hocks for that reason. I'm the president of the Mobile Home Owners Association at Terrace Gardens. I'm also the park rep and the 16, goes along with the 16B inspections. And I'm also a park rep for the organization called MAC, which is an advisory group and kind of a watchdog group and helps with different sorts of problems in the park. I don't like the way the report was derived, and I'm concerned that, in general, about ad hocks being made a convenience of the city with the respect of admitting cronyism. This has been seen in the admission of PAC to certain sorts of operations. I won't go into that now, but it's common knowledge. This has a capacity to exclude the public, these ad hoc committees, and we'll see that in the case where you find closed meetings, no hearings, yet the capacity to influence policy. So in ignoring Terrace Gardens and me in particular not bothering to pick up the phone, this raises a question. Who was talked to? Who, you know, how were the surveys conducted? How was the report derived? We don't know that. There isn't anything connected to that, or I didn't see anything connected to it. And believe me, I had my eye on it. So if I'm incorrect, please just surprise me, but not at this moment. Now, the other is that we need to, the ad hoc needs to address the constituency it purports to serve. And in this case, you know, you have a number of citizens in this town that are against runaway development, something called sustainable corridors. We have sustainable vegetable baskets in supermarkets now. Who knows what sustainable means? Is it canyonization of thoroughfares? What happens when we start to balkanize our elders? Close off our scenic routes and views that we have so that they're no longer visible from the main thoroughfares? So these types of policies and things that get done can be projected into, you know, we'll say just a roster of ad hoc groups coming down with boom, 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 getting ratified, perhaps by means of an irregular way of doing that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Parker was made.
Mr. Leighton.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't. Mr. Leighton.
I'm sorry. Shelley Parker was made chair to a three-person ad hoc subcommittee on mobile homes. She came up with an illegal and worthless proposal that said the city should mandate rent control over mobile homes that are owned by the park owners. Rent control only applies if it's the homeowner's primary residence. Park owners can't have rent control since they wouldn't be living in those units. This was a pointless pander. I want to know how city staff, namely Housing Director Leilani Hines, didn't know this ad hoc committee, which she forwarded on to the Housing Commission, was illegal and worthless. Parker made a joke of the whole ad hoc process. Yet Mayor Sanchez wants to reappoint Parker to the Housing Commission. Parker is a state officer of a political PAC called Gizmal, which has been identified as a supporter of mobile home park owners, not residents, by state legislators and park HOAs across the state. Parker also sits on the HOA of the Rancho San Luis Rey Park, which has apparently been notified that a conversion process is coming to that park. That means Principal Owner John Saunders will demand each mobile homeowner must buy their individual space for a market rate price upwards of up to an estimated quarter million dollars. If the residents don't or can't pay up, they have to vacate. There is no place for them to move. No new parks have been built in California since 1980. This conversion is serious, yet Parker and her HOA never informed most of the residents of Rancho San Luis Rey that this was even happening, though she did inform, got few details. Meanwhile, ad hoc Chair Parker refused to meet with members of other HOAs from other Oceanside Parks who were hoping for some help as their landlords illegally threaten them with eviction unless they pay for landscaping they legally don't have to pay for, or sign away their existing rent control, or get evicted. These are real-life issues. Why would Parker refuse to meet with these people? The mayor should be appointing citizens who are competent and conscientious, not because they gave money to her campaign, as Parker has done. Oh, and Ms. Parker, tell us about that 2018 letter you wrote to the then-owner of Rancho San Luis Rey where you claimed to be in charge of an HOA that did not even exist, demanding the new owner only talk to her.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leighton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sunny Soto.
Hello, thank you. Definitely had questions. I think the wording of this, I had to look into a little bit more, but you're pretty much bringing appointment up, so you want to be able to kind of clean the list of the advisory groups that you have set in place. Am I thinking of that correct, Mayor?
The city, go ahead and finish your comments, then I can respond.
Okay. So my confusion around that, but to go in and kind of clean up the people that are on the advisory groups, I think is a great thing, but I think it allows more of the community involvement into these advisory groups. I think these advisory groups in general are very important to get the 401 on from community members who may not have the city job but are still doing the work and can relay really important information to you all. So I just was looking for a little bit of clarity on that. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Navarro, I'll ask you to explain the whole vacancy reports and how you gave notice to the public on the vacancies that would be available and all that, how to apply. Okay, thank you. Mr. Knott.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. What I am concerned about is a very simple thing. In our country, we are supposed to be a representative democracy. And what we have become in the city of Oceanside is a pay-for-play, very game. And I hate to say it, it's been that way for quite a few years. And I have to say that even I was part of it. And sad to say, it needs to stop. We have right now a number of people onto a list that the mayor has proposed to. One of the people is, that has been mentioned to you, Shelley Parker. She attempted to give, address a subject that the Manufacture Fair Practices Commission decided not to continue. That was to address an issue of mobile home park homeowners' concerns. She tried to address that. She did it poorly, but she did it. I have to give her credit. But the problem is, very simply, that she has a lot of baggage along with, and there's other people within the.
Could you please address the council?
Mayor, I am.
Right.
And what happened was that the person that I'm talking about turned around and was supposed to represent the communities of the mobile home parks. We should take and have all the different positions onto our different commissions, separated by representative communities, not payoffs or appointments. This is something that is very important. Otherwise, we are no longer a representative democracy. We are pay-for-play. You support me for whatever, you know, job or position I'm in, you get appointed to a commission.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council and mayor. Linda Walsh, Mobile Home Advisory Committee. I'm here to support some of the other speakers, and that we do not support the reappointment of Shelley Parker. I can tell you that on more than one occasion, we received communications from her board, which she was included in, telling us to stay away from the proceedings at the Housing Commission and on the ad hoc committee. And I provided those to the city attorney and to staff. This is, you know, astonishing development. We did request on multiple occasions to meet with that committee, including in a public forum, in which we stated that publicly in a meeting. And after that, we were approached by Ms. Parker, and Mr. Knott was a witness to that. And she said, meeting with us was not going to work for her. And so we asked, why not? And her answer was, because we already know what we're going to do. Well, how could that be when they had not heard from the majority of the park representatives? Our board is HOA presidents from Cavalier, from West Winds. We have reps at all the other parks, including Rancho San Luis Rey, El Camino, Laguna Vista, Lamplighter, Mission View, Manor, and West, Miramar, La Salina, Pacific Trailer Park, Rancho Calavero, Terrace Gardens, and Sandy Shores. We could have brought all of those people to speak, to them. The problem is, is the individual legal cases that we work on and that I volunteer my time on, the homeowners can't come and speak to those personally because that violates their attorney-client privilege. So we were willing, as HOAs and Vicky especially, with all the problems in her park, wanted to be able to tell the city what's happening in her park. There's 17 fair housing complaints filed right now. The park manager was going door-to-door, telling people, you sign this right now, giving up your right to rent control, or you will be evicted. That stuff is not reaching the appropriate staff. So I don't know why this happened, but another thing that was included in their findings was including the Mobile Home Residency Law Protection Program, which every attorney we work with tells us not to use, and it's under investigation by the state auditor's office. So we could have, those of us who are more experienced and involved in the legal issues, could have helped those committee members understand the issues and the laws involved and avoided some of the blind alleys that this ended up going down. So we have other competent people on the waitlist. I would hope that we would move on to some of the other people that are waiting for a position on that committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to make a few comments here. First of all, Gizmal is actually a park resident, excuse me, I already allowed you to speak, so now I get to speak, because I did get a chance to investigate Gizmal. And I am a lawyer, and, okay, listen, Linda, you're out of order, okay? Thank you very much. And I understand that people are being frightened by MAC and being scared about things, saying that they're going to lose their homes. And it's very, very concerning to me that that is happening. But Gizmal does represent mobile home park residents and has been very successful at the state level in passing very strong legislation in support of park, mobile home park residents. As to, ma'am, please do not speak anymore. As to Rancho San Luis Rey and their activism in ensuring that the residents there know about the park owner considering of subdivision. The residents' HOA did a survey of all of the residents there, educating them regarding what subdivision is. And then they asked them, as part of the survey, whether they would support subdivision. They interviewed almost every single resident, and therefore, everyone knows that he is considering it. Now, what they do know now is that if they say no, they are not supporting subdivision, they are actually against it, in other words, no hell no, then the city council can actually base a denial of the request for subdivision based on that, based on whether or not the residents are supporting it or not. And actually, Barbara Hamilton did a lot of work on this and advised them as to this, sent it out to them. I don't know if you're aware of this, Mr. Mullen, but that is very strong legislation. Mr. Mullen?
I am aware of it, as Barbara works for me and keeps me up to date on the happenings in the mobile home world. But I'm not aware that there's an application pending for a subdivision. I've heard rumors to that effect.
Right.
But I don't believe that there's a pending application.
Right, correct. And probably won't be, I would hope, because they've already indicated 100% they would be against subdivision. There is no position on the Housing Commission for a mobile home park resident representative. There is none. Interesting that there seems to be a suggestion that there is. But I did, there is a motion, a second. Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, my comment is, we received the updated list at 2:00 this afternoon, and we normally would get it 72 hours in advance, so I'm not prepared to vote on any of them, so I will be voting no on all of them.
Okay. The revision was just taking one person off. I did do all the changes. Actually, there was one change that occurred. That was, I was advised through the city clerk's office that there was one vacancy in the Arts Commission, and in fact, there was not. So we were able to fix that. Deputy Keim, Deputy Mayor Keim.
With the concerns raised tonight, with how consistent it was from the public speakers, I'm not in a position to support these either. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robinson.
There we go. I would just say this, as I did attend a couple of the ad hoc meetings that they were talking about from the Housing Commission, and my comment was, it was probably some of the worst-conducted meetings that I'd sat in in a long, long time, and I finally at one, I kind of left because it was just horrible and going nowhere. That said, and I don't even know if we can do this tonight, or if we have to turn all these down and come back again, but were there other applicants that we could have put in in place of? I just don't have the list in front of me, instead of Ms. Parker.
My recollection was not. These were all folks who were reapplying for reappointment for the Housing Commission.
Mr. Clerk?
We do have, we do maintain a list of applications for all the commissions that are up for appointments. And And we do have a list of applicants that the mayor could choose from.
Other than the ones that we have?
Other than the ones that we have.
So, my question is, can we take this and approve the list except for one name, or do we have to?
Well, we can do all except the Housing Commission. How's that?
I'd be acceptable to that. I don't know if my colleagues are, but I'd-
Okay. So, I'm changing my motion to passing my list, but for Housing Commission? Okay. And it's okay with a second. Let's, Councilmember Joyce.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly speak about it. I will be supporting the motion as a second. Just about appointments in general, I really would like, and I know there's not a temperature on this right now, but in the interest of getting our commissions more activated, more connected to the council, I really would like to see each district be able to appoint a representative in the future with the mayor appointing the remaining seats. So, just as an idea for the future, to be thinking about how we can make sure that each of our districts are represented on the commissions themselves. I know some of them have special memberships, but that's one thing I wanted to bring up, just to put into the ether for people to think about. And then, just wanted to give the city clerk a chance to address the question-
Right.
-that was asked earlier.
From Isona.
Yeah, and then I have one more after you.
So, we have various boards and commissions here at the city, ranging from Parks and Rec to Housing to Utilities. And each member of these commissions have term limits, so they're only on the commission for a certain amount of years. When their term is up, we run a vacancy report that shows who is up for reappointment. Some commissioners choose to reapply for another term. Other commissioners decide, "You know what? I'm good. I don't want to be reappointed anymore." During that entire time, the city clerk's office accepts applications for various boards and commissions. And when that time is up, we run the vacancy report that shows to our mayor, "These are the seats that are up." Sometimes, there's resignations, deaths, people that aren't able to serve anymore. So, those are what's called unscheduled vacancies, and we also provide that information to the mayor as part of our report. In addition to that, we send to the mayor's office all the applications that have passed an OPD background check to ensure that the people we do appoint to these commissions are upstanding members of our community. We recently had to reject one where the person had assault, domestic violence, firing a gun in their apartment building, and we couldn't move that application forward.
Oh, gosh. Who is that? No, not really.
We couldn't move that application forward. So, as part of this process, as part of the mayor's process of appointing commissioners, we provide what commissions and seats are up for reappointment, what seats need to be filled due to an unscheduled vacancy, as well as all the applications that have passed an Oceanside Police background to the mayor's office. And from that list, the mayor could see who wants to be reappointed, who are the new people that want to be on board, and the mayor could see all the applications and make a selection on that. And it's up to the mayor's choice as to who gets appointed to that board of commission.
And almost all have to be Oceanside residents.
Yeah. But how we advertise the seats, and if there's a vacancy or a term coming up, is we publish in the Union Tribune, we publish the list in the library, and it gets posted in all the branches of the libraries. We also send it out to the community centers, so it's posted, you know, at John Landis, Melba Bishop, even Baldurama Park, so people could see what commissions they could apply for. And we always advertise it within the city clerk's office when people come in and say, "How do I, you know, I want to be part of the city. What can I do?" We refer them to the boards and commissions and what they could apply for and serve the city of Oceanside through that way. And then, at the end of every election, I always tell the candidates, "Hey, don't go anywhere. We've got several boards and commissions you could apply for as well." So, that's how we advertise it, and that's how we accept applications and kind of recruit applicants from various parts of the community to be part of the boards and commissions here in the city of Oceanside.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Joyce?
Such a good advertisement for how the council members could recruit from their areas. The second piece I wanted to bring up is cancellations for lack of quorum. So, if a commission does not have enough people at the commission, or, and the commissioners are checked in with to see if they're going to be able to attend, commissions which are conducting business, which will come to the council, are canceled because they have what's called a lack of quorum, so not enough, they don't have more than half of the members that they need. How are absences tracked within our commissions? Is it just if they're not there when we're scheduling a meeting?
That would be done through the staff that is clerking that meeting. My office only does counsel and manufactured homes, and when we do the roll call, we lodge that absence. The staff that's in charge of clerking that would be in charge of collecting the absences, but we do have something on the books about what do we do with a commissioner that has excessive absences, and they could be removed from the commission.
So, my request, because from my understanding, if a commissioner says, "I can't be there ahead of time," that's not counted as an absence. It's, especially if the meeting is canceled for lack of quorum. And so, I just want to make sure that every time that a commissioner is not able to attend, that's tracked as an absence. And I just want to see if, like, we can agree to track that in that way, so that all of the commissions, if we're having trouble reaching quorum all the time, I want to make sure they can do the business they need to. And like, we've heard tonight, there's lots of folks that want to be on these. I know it's not always that way, but I know some folks that want to be on these. And there are folks that I've seen have not come repeatedly over and over again at the commissions that I've attended. So, if that's, if we agree-
Can I jump in here? That may require bylaw changes from many of those commissions, because what's considered an absence that triggers the loss of a seat is often spelled out in their bylaws individually. So, I mean, I'm happy, we're happy to take direction, but we may have to formalize that through bylaw amendments.
And also, I will say that it is the chairs that are, can come to me, and we can look at all the absences, because there are rules that spell out, if you are absent a certain number of times, then you can be taken off that. So, for example, we're looking at that at one of the commissions. The Arts Commission, for example, that's on this list, there was, in the first report, indicated there was a vacancy. And so, based on that, I went ahead and appointed someone per an agreement that I have with Councilmember Robinson, I moved everybody up. And then, I found out that there was no vacancy. But in that discussion, I found out that one person had not been able to attend most of the meetings in this past year because he happened to be out of the country. And so, we decided we can go ahead and move the same names that were already presented to the council, and then, we would offer that seat when he had a chance to be here in the country much more. So, that was working with the-
The chair.
The-
The chair of that commission?
The chair, the chair, and also with the liaison, the staff liaison. So, that is something that if you have, especially if you're a council liaison to a commission, if you know that that is happening, you could bring that up to me, then I can go ahead and, you know, discuss that with the chair and also the liaison from the staff, and then we get something going on that.
I think I would still ask for consensus to track absences in that way, if there's enough consensus, I don't know.
I agree.
I would just like to know that.
I think they are, aren't they? My understanding is they are tracked.
They're usually tracked by the staff that's clerking the meetings.
Right.
But if they cancel for lack of quorum, and they didn't have the meeting, then they're not absent, and that's not counted as an absence. And that's what, that's the tracking that I think is missing, because things are getting canceled because there's not quorum, but they're not getting tracked as an absence. So, I just ask that we clean up that language if we have agreeance in that.
Would that be a bylaw change, Mr. Mullen?
I think that could require a bylaw change. I'm looking at the language, for example, on the Economic Development Commission, and I think they're generally similar with many of the commissions, but sometimes, there's changes. So, if a member has three unexcused absences per fiscal year from regular commission meetings without cause and/or without notifying the chair or city staff, so like you said, it's pretty broad, so.
Right. If it's taken advantage, it's excused.
So, it would be appropriate to direct staff to look into this issue and bring back?
If you want to tighten that language, we could do bylaw changes and bring it back.
Okay. So-
I heard three or four.
That would be included in the motion. Or actually, does it have to be included in the motion, or is it just direction to staff?
Just direction to staff to tighten the language with regard to absences, I think. You want, if you just-
Yeah, I think we have a consensus on that.
Call staff and say, "I'm not going to come." That's not an excused absence, right?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, I want absences tracked, at least so we know. I mean, I don't think we even know.
I don't even know if the-
I've seen many occasions, not here, but in other cities, where someone has a long-term illness and has to be out for like, two or three months and might, I mean, typically, those are excused so that they don't lose their seat.
Correct. And we had that on the library board of trustees, and I think, I agree that that's perfectly fine, but it's the, like, just saying, "I can't come Thursday because..."
Yeah, okay.
For Robinson? Are you done?
I just want to make sure we don't lose the excused absence, because there are valid reasons that need to be excused.
All right.
Motion approved, 401. Weiss, no.
Okay. I want to go ahead and take a break, five-minute break. Thank you. All right, so, we are now on item number 29. I see we've got a quorum. Oh, wow, we have everybody now at the dais. Having chocolate, I'm sure. Oh, maybe you don't like chocolate. All right, so, we're now on item number 29, and that is requested by Deputy Mayor Keim and Councilmember Weiss to direct staff to establish a program to assist eligible Oceanside low and moderate-income-level individuals and families to realize the dream of homeownership. Eligible Oceanside individuals and families would be placed on an eligibility list for the purchase of units in all new development projects, providing onsite affordable units. And this is ownership, not the apartments, correct? Oh, both. Okay. So, who'd like to take that up?
I will. This is a pretty simple item. With the new density bonus laws, we're getting these projects that come to the city with us having little or no discretion. Our residents are having to deal with impacts of all the development waivers, whether it's parking setbacks. And what the developers get is they have to put in affordable units actually onsite now, and some of those are for sale, which is a fairly new thing. And if our residents have to deal with the impact of these developments, I want them to at least have the first shot at homeownership. And these, you know, we're seeing, you know, new cops, new firefighters, new teachers and nurses can't afford a house in Oceanside right now, as you could maybe 15 years ago. So, if we are able to put them at the top of the list, to work with developers, find out a way to give them preference, and get them into homeownership, I understand homeownership, there's not as many for-sale units, but just so recently, we've constructed 14 affordable for-sale units, and still to come, there's another nine. So, that's, you know, 23 units that could go to someone from Oceanside that has connections here, that, you know, it's, this is important to me. Growing up here, having my entire, my family, my social circle here, as a new cop at the housing boom in the mid-2000s, I thought I'd never be able to afford a house here. And I know a lot of our employees and people that grew up here are feeling that same pressure, so if we can even do something small, I'm happy to start.
Thank you. And we have been trying to get staff to do this for years. Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, I just want to add, and I'm going to just use two examples. The first one is the KB Homes Project, residential project on Frazee and Old Grove Road. They have to provide 11 low-income units. So, right now, their sales prices, I think they're advertising around $750,000. But the 11 low-income units for a two-bedroom, if you are a family of four and you make $121,000 or less, the sales price of that unit is about $119,000. KB Homes is not advertising that those affordable units are available. In fact, it is our staff that had to reach out to them and find a way to get them to get those units allocated, and it looks like they're going to do some type of deal with Habitat for Humanity versus having eligible Oceanside residents being able to buy those homes. The other one I'll use is the Alta Oceanside Project up here on North Coast Highway. They have to provide 26 very low affordable units.
Rental.
They're advertising their two-bedrooms for around $3,500 a month. But for a two-bedroom, if you meet the affordability requirements, the maximum monthly rent is $1,300. And they are not advertising that those affordable units are available. I think it is incumbent on us that if staff can put together, just like we did with the homebuyer program we did a couple of years ago, if we have an eligibility list where we put it on our website, we get applications, we verify the income levels, and we go to the developers and say, "Here, here are people that are pre-qualified," because the developers, for some reason, are just not advertising. If you go to the Alta Oceanside website, you will find nothing on the affordable units. So, I think it's incumbent on us that we take the lead and make those units available to, whether it's our librarians, planners, police, fire, whomever. My preference would be Oceanside employees, but I know we can't do that. But that we make it, we make it available so that people are out there that meet those requirements are aware that those units are here, because right now, no one's aware that they're available, so, thank you.
Well, we do have, I understand, a list, a waiting list, but what I had not understood is, and to staff, I know we've brought this up over and over and over again throughout the years, about requiring the builders to give us the ability to get folks in there from our list, and they have been very resistant. I'm not sure if that requires some kind of a contract as part of the development of that housing project, but we have not been able to get, as far as I know, I've been having this conversation with the director for housing for years. So, how do we do that?
If I'm hearing you correctly, you want the city of Oceanside's Housing Department to be able to manage the affordable units onsite, and that's not really something that HCD would permit. I have a letter from them. We went through this dialogue with them on the project you've heard recently.
I don't want them managing it, I want them getting-
Well, but them responding to the question was about us managing it, so that's what I was responding to. So, no, I don't think you, especially in a for-sale project.
Not so much managing it, but stating, "This is our list. We want you to go off our list."
I haven't done, you know, this is a councilmember item, so I haven't done-
Right, right.
... detailed research on this. My suspicion is that providing a developer with an eligibility list of folks who qualify would be legally fine, provided, you know, the applicant, the applicants agree to allow us to share that information and release any potential claims that they might have for sharing that kind of information. I don't see a problem with that.
My concern is-
But making it a requirement that they have to is something different, and I think we could run into problems there.
That's the issue, because my understanding is, they get friends and relatives, and they use, you know, they get into these units because they are the only ones that have the legal right to choose who lives in these units, who buys this unit. How do we, I mean legally, how do we get into that decision-making?
Well, I think you refer to us, we'll do research with the director and city manager and see what best practices we can come up with.
Councilmember Joyce?
That was what the agenda item was for, to send it to staff.
A real quick clarifying, because you brought up Alta, and that's for rent, but the thing says for sale, and I think-
Yeah, he just said he wants both.
Are you talking about for rent as well? Because it sounds like you were just talking about sale.
It says homeownership, but-
I really, homeownership's important, I think. Do we focus on that? But if it goes into rentals too, that's fine. I just, for this item, I had chose to use homeownership in the title. If we can do that for rentals as well, I think that's important.
John, is it, is this enough, Mr. Mullen, is this enough to be able to say for-sale homes as well as rentals?
Yes.
To have this discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything else?
I mean, I do, but there's comment.
Right. Did you want to wait till after? Okay. So, we, how many people do we have to comment? So we, how many people do we have to comment on this?
We have nine speakers on the side.
Okay, let's get started.
As you see your name up on the screen, please come on down to the next available podium. First speaker is Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Diane Nygaard.
I really like this idea about making sure that our law enforcement has a home close to where they work. I've studied it in, in college, and split shifts are real hard on families. It's real hard to avoid divorce too long with the split shifts and the wear and tear it takes physically and mentally. So I'm glad to see that. My concern is that, is this use of language for affordable housing and what that means, it seems to shift and flux with real estate market-type machinations. I really like the idea of compelling the builders legally to avail themselves of the list to ensure cronyism is not something that's going to take place in how people are selected for these homes that are so badly needed and that we need by such a much larger percentage. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard, followed by Sunny Soto.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Of course, there needs to be a fair process for allocating affordable units, whether they're for purchase or for rent. My recollection is the last time this came up for projects where the city did have some control over that, there's over an eight-year waiting list. And of course, after eight years, people move on to something else. So the issue is not just the process of getting people on the waiting list, it's having enough units that are affordable for people to be able to move into. And I hope that that really becomes a focus of your effort. We see huge density bonus projects, building hundreds of moderate and above-moderate housing units, and still meeting the bare minimum requirements for the affordable number of units. Please focus on the number of units. Thank you.
Thank you. Soto?
This one's pretty interesting to me. I think, my personal opinion, it's a lot of fluff from Keim and Weiss, just because it's an election year, they want to get, make sure that they're seeing and doing something, you know, responsible. For me, I want to know what the difference between this and like Section 8 housing lists would be. And is this, is there going to be clear language around affordable, around meeting requirements, exactly what requirements you want them to meet? How is this going to affect the 10-year waiting list for Section 8 housing for those folks too? Is this going to jump before those people? Also, things that we come up with the Section 8 housing list and it being that long of a wait, not only do you maybe not need the housing services, but your email changed, your phone number changed. Getting contacted after three, two-plus years is extremely horrible, and if you can't get contacted, you're bust, you're just moved down to the bottom of the list again. So 10 years turns to 20 years. This list affecting that list, and why do we need a new list if we already have Section 8 housing with eight-plus, 10-years of people who do require housing here in this city? Wasted time.
Thank you. Rachel White, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Thank you so much, councilmembers, for this. The Housing Commission has come up with several suggestions since I've been sitting on it. And I can tell you, I've been on the waiting list. I'm a federal employee. I don't want just police and firefighters, who I have friends, who are police and firefighters. My father was a Marine. 23 years, he served and went to war so that everybody in this room can be free. I can't afford a home. I was put out on the street because the landlord who owned my apartment building said, "I can get more for your apartment than what you're affording to pay." I had to move in with my mother, who luckily needed my help because she had a stroke, and had to work 10 years past her retirement plan, just so she could afford to pay off her house, and now I'm helping her to keep it maintained. I know too many people who need this housing. And I don't believe creating a great-intentioned team can address this, as well as the Housing Commission could address this. And I think the best way to address this is to go to Section 8, which is county-wide, not city-specific, and say, "If you live in Oceanside and you have been on the waiting list for five or more years," and that is very important, because the builders and the developers say, "Hey, we got 15 units, we have five units." What do they do? They bring in their nieces, their nephews, their cousins, and they make sure that they get on the list. Why? Because they don't avail it to you. I was told years ago, when I lived in Encinitas for a while, "Oh, well, just call the developer, they'll put you on the list." There is no list. The developers are not contactable. Before they build in Oceanside, they should give you guys absolute car blanc, to say, "These are your 10. However you want to fill them, as long as legal, moral, and ethical, go for it." My parents were denied their first home because they were black. They wouldn't get the loan from the bank because the box was checked black. When they went to go view the home and put in application for the home, they were told, "Oh, it's not available," because they were black. It took them three extra months, and the loan officer who they worked with unchecked the black and checked white. They got the loan. The white family that were, that were, put in the name for the home that they wanted, fell through because they didn't have the money. They ran back to my parents at the last minute because 100% sell was their goal. My parents had already bought the home that they now have. Don't discriminate unintentionally, unintentionally. Create the list. Go to Section 8 and go, "Who in Oceanside lives in Section 8?" If they've been here for five or more years, and they're couchsurfing with their friends, they're living with their grandmother, they're staying in a hotel, they're sleeping in their car, and they're getting up and going to work every single day, give those people the right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. First off, I would encourage you to look at any other municipal template model to see if we can copy theirs and save our staff time. Secondly, I would like to make some quotes here. I've been marking them down throughout the evening here. "The cost of housing is so fricking high," one of your councilmembers said. Another one said, "This is more than folks can pay." Another one said, "Are we making a dent?" I could go on and on. But what I want to make sure that you knew, that there is a game being played in Oceanside. And it's coming from a lot of outsiders here into our community, and it's the property value game. And what's happening is, is they come in, they see a property, they pay more than that property is worth. It affects the surrounding values of the properties in the neighborhood that raise the values of those properties. It affects any reasonable price of any existing homes and causes every one of the homes to be unaffordable. And this has been allowed to go on. This is the property value game. It is something that is affecting even within the mobile home communities. And this is affecting even entire mobile home parks. This is also now affecting our business community with the recent sale of Sader Brothers and a couple other community, and the other business community area. This needs to be rung in, this property value game. If there is a direct value and it's worth X amount, you should only pay X amount. There should not be the game allowed. This is where it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. And G.T. Wharton?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Keim, councilmembers and city staff. My name is G.T. Wharton, and I'm co-founder of Strong Towns Oceanside, which is part of an international movement to make our cities safer for pedestrians and cyclists, but also to have more walkable places, thriving small businesses, and an abundance of affordable housing options. I want to first thank you, thank Deputy Mayor Keim and Councilmember Weiss for this item. I think this is the first good step. But the years-long waiting list for affordable housing is a direct result of Oceanside just not building enough housing, period, and then passing overly restrictive zoning laws on top of it. Due to suburban sprawl of single-family detached homes in the 1950s and onwards, Oceanside then claimed our city was full by the 1990s and stopped building an appreciable amount of housing, reasonable amount of dwelling units, even denying new housing projects and even suing developers that tried to build new housing. So with supply severely limited and demand growing, prices have skyrocketed in Oceanside, and we, as a city, have contributed to the state's current housing crisis. Because of this, Oceanside was given state mandated new housing requirements, which are called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA numbers. Mr. Layden, I believe, has left, so I will answer his question because he misunderstood this, but state law has essentially stripped city councils of being able to deny these housing projects, even when they're very bad, like North River Farms or the Loma Alta project, because of the housing shortage. If we had kept up with demand for the past 30 years, we would not be in this predicament. Today, Oceanside is far behind on its RENA numbers, which are divided by income level. For example, for very low-income housing units, we have only permitted 7% of the 1,268 units that are required. For low income, only 6% of the required 718 units have been permitted, and there's only five years left in this, in this RENA cycle. So with the severe lack of affordable housing options, it's no surprise that most residents cannot afford rent, let alone buy a home in Oceanside. According to Oceanside's own budget report, the median home in Oceanside is valued at $712,000, but the potential buyer would need about $155,000 in household income to buy that house. But what is our median income in Oceanside? $86,000. So you would need 1.8 times or nearly double the median income here in Oceanside to afford the median home. That is a broken system. We need solutions like zoning reform that allow us to build missing middle housing, like duplexes, multiplexes, townhomes, and more affordable housing projects for low and very low-income families. Oceanside just signed on to be an AARP, Age Friendly City, which calls for these same things, especially missing middle housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walshow, followed by Amber Kay Niotoa, followed by David D.
Good evening again, Linda Walshow, Mobile Home Advisory Committee. We just completed an eight-month study with San Diego Seniors Community Foundation and UCSD researchers that showed that the largest percentage of newly homeless persons in the county, and that's in the whole county, are now seniors and veterans who are losing their existing housing by being priced out. We are surrounded by military bases like Camp Pendleton, which is the largest Marine base in the U.S., the Naval Station at Coronado, and Miramar Air Station. A lot of the veterans live in low-income housing. We have a lot of disabled vets. We have a lot of people on fixed and low incomes. The average rents in Oceanside, according to Realtor.com last week, was $3,500 a month. The average social security check nationally, according to our study, was $1,374 a month. That doesn't pencil out for housing, no matter what you do. I have personally met working people working two jobs, including a nurse who was working also part-time at Home Depot. She's living in her car in Albertson's parking lot for seven years. There's a teacher that came to the Housing Commission for assistance. She lives in senior housing with no rent control, and they are raising their rents in $100 increments and refusing to give them rental agreements, saying how long that increment lasts. So they're doing it again the next month and the next month, until they force them out so that they can rent the unit at market rate again. So this is happening citywide and countywide and statewide, so we don't have enough housing. I mean, we have suggested the possibility of having developers donate an acre or two of their land, possibly, instead of paying in Lufi's, that could be used as nonprofit modular or manufactured housing. I don't know why not. San Marcos has three nonprofit parks, and those were bought with tax-exempt bonds, I'm told by their council. So we need to look at all options, because when we did Mission Cove, we found out that if you use any federal monies, it, the project then has to be opened up on a first-come, first-served basis as to anyone who applies, not just the people on the list. Also, I believe that when we built Villastoria, I think the city was successful in dedicating some of those units for affordable units. I don't know how that was done exactly, but it was an agreement with the developer that was arranged for at the time that project was built. So maybe we just go back and look at how that got done and, but I don't, I think the affordable units, they considered, started at 450, because that's what the developer said was affordable. So I don't know how you fix it, but we have to fix it. Thank you.
Amber Kay?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I want to thank my representative, Peter Weiss, and Deputy Mayor Keim for bringing this discussion forward tonight, because it is long overdue. But I'm going to have to co-sign with Sunny as well, as a longstanding Oceanside community member that has been here for decades and was raised in housing instability and faced homelessness, and is a professor now and deals with students every semester emailing me about housing crisis and insecurity and homelessness. Student or teacher aides at my kid's school this summer were asking me how they're going to make it through the summer. We need affordable housing for the people who are our community members and serving our communities. But I do recognize this a little bit as some political grandstanding and concern about our low-income community. 76 days until November 5th. And to be clear, I support items in which we are going to prioritize affordable housing, because as J.T. brilliantly laid out the numbers, we are disappointingly behind where we need to be to meet the standards and needs of our most vulnerable members of our community. Up until now, you have voted against raising affordable standard, affordable housing minimums. When we were here and as a community, seven months ago, asking you to raise it to 20% citywide, the best we got from you was 15%. This measure that you're bringing forward, we could have got two for every 10 homes. Instead, we're getting one and a half. And that is because of your leadership and your, the way you've acted up until now. Not to mention that you voted against things such as protection for renters, and the renters are the people who are now my students, living in their cars, emailing me about where they're going to go, and we've yet to still provide that safe parking lot. So I would recommend that we follow a lot of the suggestions of the community, this discussion again, I'm very grateful for having tonight, and making sure that we prioritize low-income members of our community to be able to stay in the community. I vocalized before that the only reason I am still in this community, unlike many of the people I graduated from El Camino High School with, is because I was able to secure low-income housing. I was there for 13 years, because, and, and where I am now, I can't afford to buy my house because of student loans, and I don't make that $150 that G.T. was talking about to get my condo, right? So these are definitely priorities that are impacting me. I'm an educator in this community, I'm a mother in this community, I'm a lifelong member of this community, but I'm more concerned about the people who are coming after me, like my children and my students and the members who are out here now, who need this more than I do in this moment. The math is the math. We are sorely not where we need to be, and I thank you for bringing this forward for us to have this discussion tonight. But should either of you be here after this election? I hope you stay vigilant and on top of this at the highest level, and that we don't see something like this 74 days, 74 days before the next election. Thank you.
David D.
Hello, good evening. I just have a quick, a few quick things about the list. My understanding of Section 8 is going to be, Section 8 is directly geared towards low, low, lowest income. So I just wanted to clarify that, or have staff clarify that, so just wanting to make sure that that's, there's a distinction there. However, what I do want to ask is then, does this list, because Oceanside does have its own housing authority, does it create a precedent for a low-to-moderate income, like, or a list similar to Section 8, because we are setting aside a separate list? So just wanting to kind of get a little bit of clarification on that. And then just kind of reiterating everything that's been going on tonight in terms of the homeownership could have been increased if we had a little bit more of those units and those kind of like, those percentages could have been pushed a little bit more. And then last thing is, how do we continue with the enforcement and the discussion prior to the public comment, period? How are we going to be then able to enforce developers or the folks who are looking at that list to take into? that list to take into account the list that they have in front of them? So this is a great start. I am glad to see people stepping forward, and I hope that this is something that is able to continue moving forward. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. So that is it, right? Okay. Back to the council. Trying to remember if there were any questions that were asked. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments and stuff, but so many are really above and beyond the scope of this idea and motion, and I'll let the makers of it clarify it. But as I understand it, and just so I'm clear, what you're really asking is to send it to staff to work out all the details and to just simply have a way that people can sign up and say, hey, we're interested in a low-income project if it comes up, or whatever my status are that we don't set, that's set by state. And then we would hand that list of names over to a developer and say, please pick. But I don't think we can demand that they do Oceanside. Do I understand that correctly, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Hold on. Are you done? Okay. Deputy Mayor Keim.
I have one question.
Well, he's up now.
Yes, you are correct. This wasn't limited to police or firefighters, Oceanside residents who want to make a priority. I use that as an example of those type of professions that can't afford a market-rate house right now with a $6,500 all-in monthly cost. So that's why I use that example. Now, this is simply, and the reason this is newer, because with the density bonus laws, before, a lot of developers would choose to pay the end-LOF fees, especially for for-sale products. Now, when they take advantage of the density bonus, they're actually building on-site, and so you have new for-sale affordable units coming onboard online. And I want to make sure that we actually prioritize our residents so they can realize a dream of homeownership. So that's the difference. That's why this is poignant now, as we're just starting to get these online. We have more in the pipeline, and I want to see if we can, this is very beginning, I want to see if we can figure out a program to make sure that our residents have to deal with the impact of this development, also receive the benefit.
So, but it's homeownership and also the rentals, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's fine. And so I'll make a motion to direct staff.
Direct staff what?
To evaluate, implement, or bring back direction of how we can implement that, and that complies with any HUD issues, FHA, and make sure that what our abilities are and what we need to do and what we can do.
So I'm glad this was on. This is actually, I want to go beyond that, because I believe it is titled enough that we can, because I have heard in the past, and I have pushed this issue with the housing directors in the past, you know, why can we not get people, Oceanside people, in these buildings, in these apartments, in these homes, past this wall by the developers? The builders, excuse me. The developers sell it off to the builders, and then they decide who gets to live there. And it's not just Oceanside. It happens in Carlsbad, it happens everywhere. It's families, it's friends, and there's a wall. So my question is, especially to Mr. Mullen, who is the attorney here, can we get beyond that? Can we, at the time that the project is approved, can we get a condition that they pick from a list and, you know, have a larger list than the number of units so that they don't, you know, feel like they don't like this person, okay, go to the next person? Mr. Mullen?
I doubt it. Honestly, I think that that is probably going to conflict with state law, and I think HCD has essentially said that in the past to other jurisdictions. But you're directing us so we could evaluate all the available options to implement the councilmember item.
Because if we can't do that, then this is meaningless. This language here is meaningless, because the builders decide. And that's the frustration that I've had with the Housing Department, that they haven't been able to crack that. They haven't been able to negotiate getting Oceanside residents in these units.
Well, a lot of these projects the city's involved in, and to the extent you're financially subsidizing them, then of course you're going to have more leverage, because you're going to negotiate regulatory agreements on projects in which we're participating. And we've had several of those, you know, Mission Cove, La Misión, et cetera. I think what this item, as I understood it, is about is purely private projects.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the private projects.
A purely private project, so I am suspicious that the city can tell a private property owner who he has to or she, where that company is going to sell their unit to. They have to meet eligibility requirements, but we could do that research. Again, I haven't comprehensively looked into that, because this is a councilmember item.
Right.
We also have that list, and ask the developer when they come here and have them commit to that publicly. There's, I want to try whatever ways we can to make it happen. If you don't want to do that, I understand.
Oh, no, I do want to do that. I want to push even harder, but the thing is that I think they're going to push back and say, I don't have to do this. I'm not going to do it. Councilmember Joyce.
Before I go down my list, a question for our city attorney. Do you think, and I know that you haven't done the research yet, but I know that fair housing law talks about how people get in, do you think that as a city, we could require property owners of affordable units to alert the city when an affordable unit becomes available?
Well, we have a regulatory agreement with them that dictates the sale price in the case of a for-sale, and it's recorded. I'm not sure I'm following. You're saying for a rental property, then?
Family moves out of a rental, it's deemed affordable, it has to stay affordable.
Yeah.
So that's, part of the problem is, and it's not really that new, we do have 2,000 units already on the books before density bonus law even came into our purview in a very meaningful recent way. But if somebody vacates one of these units already, folks don't know that a new affordable unit has now become available.
You're talking about a deed-restricted unit, because it's been, it's either a density bonus, inclusionary, onsite unit.
Correct.
That doesn't strike me as unreasonable, but again, we'd want to.
So I think that's our best. If we're having a list of folks, we have to know when something comes available. Doing a lot of the work on the front end with the developer, I mean, a lot of the developers don't end up having that property in the end anyway, so it's really the folks that are renting it out that we need to be holding accountable in that space. So that's what I would think actually make this something that could work. So I have a couple of other things. How many staff do we have currently monitoring affordable units and what they're charging to make sure that they're charging the right rents now?
We currently have two staff.
Okay. And we have 2,000 units now. I think in the kitty, we've got a lot of units, just as was referenced, we have all these much larger developments with these units attached. It's a lot of work. It sounds like a lot of work to monitor and make sure that those things, because every time they come up to be re-rented again, we have to know whether or not they're doing, within the correct income level, that the person that they're renting it to qualifies in that income level. It just sounds, it sounds like a lot of work. Important work, but a lot of work. For affordable units, I think if you do this, the 26 units that are for sale, it's great. I think that's going to be awesome. I think unfortunately, it's going to probably raise some expectations that folks like me who are desperate to really get into homeownership for our family's future and to pass down wealth to our own next generation, you know, I think that list is going to be very long and that list of built is going to be very short. So I would encourage the council to look into all the things that we could do to get into the game of building units that could go there. I know that's not on tonight, but I just think that that's an important thing to call out, because that list is going to be long. Everyone I talk to that's a renter would sign up for that list. If we also want to give renters a chance, then we should consider banning the use of algorithms which artificially inflate the rental prices as they are right now, which maximize the profiteering in the housing world. Again, that's not on this one, but if anyone on this dais would like to partner with looking at the banning the use of algorithms which artificially inflate rental prices, I'd be happy to work with you. Rental affordable units need monitoring, because corporate homeowners have proven to need monitoring. We need an affordability manager, because this is a ton of work, and if we're actually going to be serious about connecting people to the housing that they need, then we need somebody that's going to be doing this work every day. A policy of just taking in names is not enough. We already said we have, if we're going to be connecting these folks to the homeowners, then we're checking their paperwork to make sure that they qualify. It's a ton of work, and I would really suggest that we add a position using Measure X funds under the homelessness prevention, because this is what it is. Getting folks into affordable housing prevents homelessness. Try that as a pilot for one year, and don't put more work on an overworked housing department. Put our money where our mouth is. If we're really serious about getting folks into these housing, let's hire someone to do it. So I would recommend amend the motion to include suggesting to the Measure X committee to add this position for a year pilot.
I second that. Councilmember Weiss.
I don't support that, because we don't even know if we can do the program. This issue is sending it to staff to evaluate and see if we can even do this, and then bring it back. At that point, if we can, at that point in time, then I'd consider that, but I'm not going to add a position tonight for a program we may never implement.
Well, this has gotten, I think that the conversation has gotten bigger, because just this right here, the language, we're talking about private ownership of these projects, the apartment buildings and the units, homeowner units, that's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to make happen. But if we, as Councilmember Joyce said, if we go beyond that and look at what is being vacated, and then monitor that and be able to know when they are, then we have a list, we can get in there, people in there, who are Oceanside residents. And that, I think, is the key. I really do think is the key, and you do need people. I don't want to call the Housing Department and not have anybody there answering my phone, continue, especially during business hours. We need to have more staff in the Housing Department, because things are just not getting done. I'm getting calls from people who are not able to talk to their either social worker or caseworker in months, for months, and they're falling through the cracks. We need to have more, a better housing department, that is better, I shouldn't say stocked, more employees stacked, more employees there to be able to help this, because if we don't, we're going to be just, it's going to continue at the same level where people get out of their Section 8 and then they become homeless, when if we had answered that freaking phone call the first time, they wouldn't get off their Section 8. And this whole thing about getting inspections before, I mean, are we really getting out there the information that they can get an inspection for free? I don't think so. So I think that there's just too much happening in the Housing Department for the number of people who are in there and trying to, you know, hold up the world. We need a better, we have more, we need more employees in the Housing Department, therefore to add this, I mean, I'm really urging us to add another person to be able to look at this part. This we can be successful at. The other one, I don't think so. So on a vote, there is a motion. Okay, Councilmember Weiss.
No, go ahead.
Councilmember Robinson.
Okay. I'm not sure how such a simple request, motion, has gotten so convoluted. Now we're talking about Section 8, adding new people. Hold up a chart you want. The original motion was to go with what the two councilmembers had put forth, and I support that. Give it to staff, let them come back. They've heard us, they can come back and talk about how many people we need to implement it. I think it's, to just now throw up, oh, now we want to hire another, and maybe I agree with you, but this isn't the place to do it. The idea was very simple. Staff, look into this, this list concept, all the things that go with it, come back to us, and then we can have the discussion about, do we add a person or not? We can't do it tonight anyways. We're not going to hire them next week. So I'd just say, let's just keep it simple and stay with what's before us.
What is before was changed on the dais when they said not only homeownership, but also rentals. It's a whole different thing, yeah.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So there is an amendment on the.
They're looking at it.
Excuse me, did you want to continue to speak?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Alls we're asking staff is to look at and evaluate it. You're trying to side the problem before we even get their feedback. Let us get their feedback, then we can make all these big decisions later. We don't have to make them tonight.
No, but the recommendation to come back, sorry, I apologize.
Councilmember Joyce.
The recommendation to come back with a staffing recommendation on this is important, because I've been trying to get this done for a year and a half now, so now we have that. Well, that's included in the motion. We can't hire them tonight, you're right, with this program.
Okay, there is an amendment on the table to the main motion, so we would have to vote on that first.
I made a motion first. There was no second.
There was already a motion and a second, and that was your, you know, statement, which was, what was your statement?
I didn't get a second on his original motion.
Well, there was no second.
The other one.
You second it? Okay.
Yeah, there was a second.
No, no, it's an amendment. Roberts rules. Not recognized. Let's just go ahead and vote on the amendment, which is to add a employee.
I think the amendment was to go to the Measure X commission to add the position of an employee.
To add a position and using Measure X funds.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, on an amendment to the main motion. Please vote.
I didn't take the amendment to them. I didn't accept the amendment.
Roberts rules, you don't have to. Okay, we're just voting on the amendment to the main motion.
City Clerk Navarro.
Sorry, sir, I don't, you're not recognizing you. Let's vote on the amendment.
Robinson, Weiss, no. Keim, Epstein.
Okay. All right, no other lights. Let's vote on the main motion. And before we do, I do want to make a statement here. How many minutes do I have left?
You have one minute.
One minute, okay. Oh, Councilmember Joyce, you wanted to speak?
I'm calling the staff.
All right. Councilmember Joyce.
So I would still ask to staff also give us a recommendation on our ability to add the requirement for corporate homeowners to alert the city when a vacancy becomes available on a rental unit. I think that's really important.
Yes.
For a deed-restricted unit, that's, for which we have a regulatory, and, you know, there may already be such a requirement, I don't know. I don't have our template in front of us, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's good with the main motion? Okay.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and support this, but I think that it is electionary just before an election. But secondly, more importantly, the actual language of the motion doesn't do anything for us, because the question that I had is, can we require the builder to do this? And the answer, HCD says no. So that is my concern. We also have already a list to go to, so I don't like the idea of prioritizing, so.
Point of order, personal privilege.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry. It's my time to talk. I have 30 seconds left, all right? So there is no priority word used in here. It was used during the discussion, and so I would not be happy about prioritizing until we have that list from existing lists. Councilmember Weiss.
The Section 8 list is not going to pertain to this. And regardless of where this goes, for those of you out there, if you're looking to rent a two-bedroom apartment for $1,300 a month, call Alta Oceanside and tell them you're interested in the affordable units. At this point, they know they have to answer your question. If you want to buy a house, a condo down at Frazee in Old Grove, call the KB Place and tell them you're interested. A four-person, you can get the house for $120,000.
Okay, just a clarification here. The motion that is before us, the main motion, includes rentals, correct? Okay. Councilmember Joyce.
Out.
Done? Okay, let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, item number 30 is requested by Deputy Mayor Keim and Councilmember Weiss for council approval in accordance with Council Policy 100-20, for more than four hours of staff time to assess and develop strategic goals and policies to address the city's ongoing homeless crisis and its impacts on quality of life issues. Who's speaking? I have no lights.
Just wait for your, you know. Okay. This, I alluded to this or referred to this in my earlier comments with our grant. If we're going to receive this money, I want to make sure that our elected officials who are going to be held responsible for the spending of that money are directly involved and understand the daily updates and have the ability to talk to staff on a regular basis outside of council meetings and make sure that we actually are able to implement, make some progress on these. And I think it'll be effective to have a subcommittee that we go ahead and have that communication dialogue and get some real progress on this.
Okay, no other lights? How many people wishing to speak?
We have seven speakers on this item.
Okay, let's get started.
Our first speaker is Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Diane Nygaard.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, oh esteemed councilmembers and mayor. You know, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about all the studying and research and all of the calculations and everything else and money getting sucked up administratively. I just heard for a long time what really basically boils down to, if you're not going to kick in the dough, you're not going to do the sweat, you're not going to do the research, and you want to rely on a template, it ain't going to happen. It's going to, it's going to shake down to pure tokenism. And, you know, we need 25% in this town for these affordable houses, and heard that got whittled down. So the sentiments become clear through this kind of crossfire that's been occurring up here on the dais. You're revealing yourselves and not in a good light. And I'm not going to pinpoint anybody in particular, but when I hear these big calls for simplicities and the boil downs, that's, that's a template for me. And that sounds like somebody's in a developer's pocket. That's all I have to say. And yes, this is my contentious evening. I hope I'll be a lot sweeter next time I drop in.
Ms. Nygaard.
Honorable Mayor and Council Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. I do find it curious that this agenda item appears on the same agenda with two major new homeless programs moving forward. So thank you for your leadership on our safe parking lots and for the 78 corridor project that are really important improvements to what we've been trying to do addressing homelessness. And I can assure you, in addition to the staff time that's been spent removing trash from the Buena Vista corridor and around the sacred El Salto waterfall, our volunteers will be very happy to spend their Saturdays doing something else. So thank you for moving those forward. But I would suggest that rather than a workshop, a staff workshop on homelessness, why aren't we really looking at a city council workshop, looking at all of the priorities impacting quality of life in this community? Let's do a comprehensive workshop, get community input on these issues, bring in technical experts as they may be needed, and let's do this in a comprehensive way and address homelessness as part of bigger picture issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny Soto, followed by Rachel White.
Yes, thank you for your time again. My concerns with this is, we heard earlier that there's like two people that are working 40-plus, probably another 30, so maybe a 70 hours of just two people working in the city out of all of the employees that we have that work for us, focusing on homelessness specifically. There's two more that focus on affordable housing. I don't think that taking hours away from their probably extremely crazy workload to assess a plan is going to be copacetic to anything. I think that we need to hire more people specifically around the crazy encompassness of houselessness. I use some of my time to do this, and I already know, four hours isn't going to get you anywhere. I think we definitely need to make more positions available for the extremely crazy workload that is around houselessness, affordable housing, and all the complex issues that come along with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel White, followed by Jimmy Naught.
Thank you so much. I know it's been a long evening for all of you, and it's been a long day for me. I've been up working since 6 o'clock and on my way here and studying this. There's an eight-hour workday, and four hours of staff time is not defined as four hours a day, four hours a week, or four hours a month. Because of that ambiguity, I would ask you not to vote on this. You have a housing commission. Everyone on the housing commission have masters. We study and think and talk about this every single month. We wrap our heads around everything that's presented to us. If you want policies to address this, if you want goals to address this, we can do a workshop with all of our community partners. We can help you with this, to take valuable time away from a very small office. And I can tell you, I went into that office. I actually did a walk-in because someone said, no one returns our call. There was one person in the office, it was poorly lit, it was intimidating, and when I asked the question, where do I find forms for this? How do I interpret the forms for this? I was told they're on the spindle, read it. The staff in that office is hostile to someone who's vulnerable, to someone who is in need. And I put myself in that person's shoes, to walk in that person's shoes. I was called and told, as a housing commissioner, somebody called me and told me, I was told there's going to be three months before the person returned my call because they're going on vacation. Who goes on vacation for three months and doesn't return a call? I work for the federal government. If I don't pick up my phone anytime during my nine-hour workday, my boss is having a serious talk with me. Who leaves for three months and doesn't pick up a phone? Our housing department needs to be revamped, maybe it needs a workshop, maybe it needs new hires. It needs something, it needs to change so that it serves our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Naught, followed by Amber Kaye Niatoa.
This is quite interesting, in the sense of what this is going to address, because we already have a group regionally to address this. And we're not just duplicating, we're triplicating or quadruplicating the groups to address this. I mean, you have Sandag that's doing it, you've got the county that's doing it, you have the regional group that's doing this, and now we're proposing to have another group here in Oceanside do this. And the question is also impacts on quality of life issues. Whose life? Whose quality? What quality? Is this a status symbol? I mean, I can sit, you know, stand here and tell you that for a senior on limited income, a quality of life is like making sure that you have enough food in your cabinet, make sure that you're going to be fed, or having a roof over your head, or making sure that if you're a family, that you're going to have medicine and a health care for your children. Whose quality of life are we talking about? This is really a lot of standards that are being, you know, proposed. This is a bigger thing than just what you're, you're bringing forward. I think that it'd be a better use to do this regionally because homelessness itself is a regional problem. We already know it, it's been studied to death. Why don't we listen? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Niatoa, followed by David O. Oh, excuse me, is that right?
Yes. Thank you again, honorable mayor and members of the council. Our community is showing up and repeating itself, and I hope we're being heard here tonight, that this is another valuable thing to come forward for us to have the conversation. But we need to be thinking in the forward about how our city is constructed around these issues. If we are not hiring staff specifically for these things or expanding areas and departments that are addressing these issues, I mean, seniors are going to be over 60% of our population in 2034, and they're the fastest growing senior popul, or fastest growing housing population. Not to mention that we don't have any housing for people who are trying to go to college or start their own lives, or young families and things like that. And I want to echo the quality of life stuff that Jimmy Naught was talking about, because what we are already doing is spending a butt-ton of money on gatekeepers and other ways to clean up downtown and make our city appear nice. But all we're doing is shuffling people inland into my district, in front of businesses, homes and so forth. So the quality of life, are we talking about the people who are being shuffled? Because that sucks, right? Like, at least you heard the ocean at night before, now, you know, you're being pushed down into a concrete jungle somewhere. And for the people who now know that the homeless issue isn't really being addressed, we're just moving it inland and forcing our businesses that aren't in the tourist district to be dealing with populations coming into their space as well. And so the quality of life issue, what does that mean? I just find this whole thing to be so unbelievably vague. What is it doing? Thank you.
Thank you. David O.
Good evening. So, yeah, good evening, council. I was just wanting to kind of come up and talk a little bit about the existing staff burden that is already amongst everything that's going on in the city. I also wanted to make a really important distinction that our housing department is Housing and Neighborhood Services Department, and then Housing and Neighborhood Services Department also administers the, is a, what is it, Housing Authority. So this is a federal kind of like side of things that is a lot more bureaucratic and a lot more paperwork, and so that does take a lot more staff time. And so housing resources and resource provision isn't necessarily happening across the housing, the housing department. There are Neighborhood Services, there are the Community Resource Centers, and those are really, really important. But those are people that are also kind of just going along and providing those resources. I think a really important part that Jimmy mentioned earlier was that a lot of this work is already being done, is something that we need to kind of take advantage of and look across and find more spaces for collaboration. I come from the world of social service provision, a lot of that kind of like interdisciplinary work that needs to be happening is not necessarily happening here through the city. And so that's something that I would like to see, partnering with our commissions to see if they might be able to take on some of the, some of the, some of the workshop ideas and kind of expanding on those, having that space and then being able to bring that forward, that would be an incredible idea. And then having that be taking place and heard here would be, it would be, it would allow for a lot more space for discussions, not taking up city council, or city council time to have those moments of public input. I think a really important part is also making sure that we are able to create and utilizing the program structures that are in place. So like, I take, I look at Measure X as an example, where if we can use Measure X funds to build out the social infrastructure for these programs, so that it is not necessarily just something that is in the moment and we are just funding, but rather looking for ways to build out the programs sustainably, so that we're able to have something that is regenerative, that we had this pool of money, we built something out of it, how do we build a structure that is going to be able to continue past it? That, I think, is something that we have not necessarily looked at, and I think that that would be a little bit more, better use of staff time than something as vague as this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that's it. Correct? Okay, to the council, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I think, and I appreciate all the comments, but I think it's real important that, that you all understand what is being asked for. And Council Policy 100-20 is really for your, our staff's protection. In other words, it says that on an item, a council member, the mayor, myself, anybody up here, we are allowed up to four hours of staff time to, and if I misstate this, please correct me, sir. And what's being asked for here is just for council approval to go beyond that four hours. So my question I would have, and to that, and having done this myself, having gone, might mean, it doesn't mean it's housing staff time that they, I don't, I don't know what the project is per se that they're going to be working on. But it could be secretary or admin assistant in the fire department, it could be somebody over in PD, it could be somebody on the city manager's staff that they, it's just, it's not necessarily a housing staff's issue. I'm sure there might be a question or two for them in there. But it's really to protect staff from us just going and dumping the stuff on them, and that's what this is really about. So my question to my colleagues is, do you have any idea how many more than the four hours you might need?
Right. So I misspoke when I said subcommittee, I didn't, just maybe a couple meetings where we can have multiple staff members in a room, and if it goes over that four hours, that's why we're asking for that specifically, so we can be in a room with multiple staff members, get briefings, something to that effect, just so we can have multiple people there and get a better idea of exactly what we're doing on a regular basis.
So you're not doing a workshop?
No.
It's just, just getting information?
Very cognizant of, yeah, just very cognizant of that four-hour rule. So we can't have a, just, I can't have a meeting with six staff members that lasts an hour, because that violates that rule. So for this, we can.
That's a good way of, so you think it's 10 hours you might need, or do you have any limit to what you think?
Two meetings.
I'm not asking you any, just give me a ballpark.
That seems realistic as we go through. If we could sit down and have multiple staff members and ask questions, and it goes over that four-hour rule, we need that, we need that buffer, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss.
Part, so we approved a program tonight dealing with homeless issues specifically to the geographic area of the Buena Vista Creek. And we have had various programs outside, some have worked, some haven't. So my intent when talking with Deputy Mayor Keim is nothing to do with, this is not a housing issue. This would be bringing in the city manager's office, potentially the police department, code enforcement, public works, to look at what options are available. And on my side of it, right now, we have criminals who happen to be homeless that cannot get booked in jail. What do we do to make them somewhat accountable? Because right now, they're not, and they can just proliferate. So at some point, we need to be able to do something. And for those people who need help and want help, we have methods of doing that. The hot team has the social workers, they do all the right things. But at some point, we need to be able to do something, and I don't know what that something is, which is why we want to meet with staff to see what options, if any, there may not be, that we can do to help the homeless situation.
Councilmember Joyce.
I'm so confused. I thought, I thought we were talking about addressing homelessness, and it, and the end of this came to basically like, we want to meet with the police to see how we can lock people up. I don't get it. I really, I was excited when I saw this item, because I thought, oh, right, 2019 was the last time we had a homelessness plan. It's a thick plan, read it when I ran, interesting, and he's a lot of updates. Sal can speak to whether or not he's looked at updating that plan in any way, shape or form on as many things that he does. He's nodding, so yeah. So this doesn't have to do with homelessness plan, strategic plan for homelessness? I'm clarifying, because I really, I have all my questions have to do with that, and this is, can you clarify?
We're not looking to update the city's strategic homeless plan.
There's item language again. There's item language again. Let me pull that language back up. For all of us to meet with staff—
To assess and develop strategic goals and policies to address the city's ongoing homeless crisis and its impacts on quality of life issues.
Yeah. So I don't see how we're not addressing homelessness with housing staff. I think that's like what they do. In fact, the folks that we have working on this most closely are in the Housing Department. They would also be the most informed folks that would know how to build a plan out on this. So to be clear, you don't want to develop strategic goals to address the homelessness crisis as stated in the staff report.
So there were people who mentioned of homeless—
Okay, did you—
—getting pushed out into—
Well, I have questions. I do have more comments after, but yes.
So for—
Are you done?
No, because I have a question, but then I have to—
Sorry.
Well, I'm not done. I have a question, and I'm going to turn my light off. I'll turn my light back on. Can you clarify?
I have to wait for her to talk.
Okay, well, my light—
I'm going to talk after he's done that, so however you want to run it.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Weiss. Is that—you going to answer, and then you want to speak again after that?
No, I'll answer his question.
Okay.
We are having homeless issues in shopping centers, in industrial parks, that have nothing to do with the Housing Department. My intent is to not include the Housing Department. We have outreach efforts now, and what options do we have available to try to help those businesses that are directly being affected by not just homeless, but criminally homeless?
I was waiting to be recognized. Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Joyce.
Sorry, I just—I try to play by the rules. Okay, so can we make the motion, then, to not say that it's not doing—addressing the homelessness crisis? I just—I'm—if it's just about that, then it's a whole different item. So I just want to be clear. This would be for us to meet with staff and give input on a strategic plan to address basically visible homelessness that impacts what we're talking about, quality of life. Okay, well, I do think we need to update our strategic goals, so I'll just speak to that, because that's what I thought we were talking about. And who would do this work? Housing staff absolutely has to do this work. We have dozens of resources: Brother Benno's, Humane Eight Showers, CRC, SD Rescue Mission, Section Eight, our own housing itself, food pantries that work for food insecure folks all around the city, Oshside Unified Schools house some of those, an upcoming safe parking lot, a hot team, a gatekeeper's company by outreach, the LBGTQ Center, who also does a lot of work within getting people connected to housing, Mike and his crew, whose names escape me right now, but they work down on Apple Street, and many more, I'm sure that I didn't name everybody. Coordinating those services is how successful cities like Houston made real progress. And that's what we need, and that would actually—that would actually show us progress in the places that you're talking about, because enforcement will, again, just move these people to another place in the city. It does not solve the ongoing homelessness crisis as described in the item. So I would ask that we finally take ownership and hire some help to manage that long list of services that we just talked about. But again, can we just make sure that when you state the motion, you state it clearly about what you're asking for, because it's kind of been all over the place?
To the point, there is no motion on the floor yet. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Keim would have liked for you to put your light on, but go ahead.
I asked if someone wanted to make a motion. That's going to be very simple. Request by Deputy Mayor Keim and Councilmember Weiss for council approval in accordance with Council Policy 100-20 for more than four hours of staff time to assess and develop strategic goals. And I'll strike "assess" and "develop." We're not going to do those two. To discuss with staff strategic goals and policies to address the city's ongoing homeless crisis and its impact on quality of life issues. That's it. That's it.
Well, that's—that means that there are two different things we have been talking about for the last 20 minutes or so. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Councilmember Joyce.
So just to be clear, you're going to meet with staff and talk about these goals and policies that you want. Are you expecting that they're going to bring back everything that Deputy Mayor Keim wants? Or how are they going to know what everybody supports and what to bring back? How are we going to end up with a policy that is awful because we didn't plan out this process correctly?
Can I address that, Mayor?
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Yes, this is not, obviously, to give any direction to staff that's out of council policy as well. It's to listen, figure out exactly what's happening, and if we do want to bring something back, we bring it back in front of the full council. That's it. This is—it's very simple. This is just to have meetings that possibly take more than four hours with multiple staff members and make sure we know exactly what's going on on the ground. And if there's policy we need to make and bring it back to council, not in that meeting, but we can do that. And we have a better idea of what's happening, especially with the grants we accepted and everything happening. We're responsible in making sure that we use that money properly, and we make an impact. And that's it. That's the motion and a second. I call for the question at this point.
Councilmember Joyce.
I relinquish.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing a motion and a second by two candidates for the November 5th election. And if we had—what was that? No, I'm talking about the motion, this—that's on this sheet here. And I want to know, because this crisis didn't happen overnight. It has especially gotten worse in the last few years. So I'd like to know why I couldn't get a second at the short-term vacation rentals workshop that we had here, that I was trying to pause the number of short-term vacation rentals that were starting to go into workforce housing. And at that time, there were, I think, 900 units. I couldn't get a second to get a cap, study the situation, see what the impacts are going to be. That had to happen five years later, when things got actually worse, and we've even got short-term vacation rentals in the low-income neighborhoods—
Point of order.
—losing, unfortunately losing, all of this housing, and basically just commercializing our, what used to be, homes. Where were you when we were—in 2021, when we were dispersing the ARPA funds, and we had staff from the Housing Department going door-to-door, as well as myself, and trying to find out what the community needed to ensure that they would not become homeless? And we found out that they needed food, they needed job retraining, they needed childcare, they needed basically money to pay for the funerals that were happening. And the staff actually had a contest to see how many surveys that can get done. We had, I think, about 150 surveys that were done, and no money went to the community, none. And we were having people losing their homes even then. Where were you when we tried to raise the in-lu fees so that we could create—we can actually build 100% affordable housing? And here we are, we're falling behind. The fees were ridiculously low. I mean, we might as well have had zero fees. Where were you when the developer—the affordable housing developer—
This is a simple request, point of order.
—came to us and said, you know, hey, I want to build a project, and I've got everything set up, and the vote was four to one, no, we don't want you.
Point of order, Mayor.
That was delayed—I'm sorry, I'm still speaking. That was delayed for a year. He had to come back and apply, and he was the only one that got it. And now, finally, we're getting 50 units—
I'm going to call for the question again.
—we're finally getting—I'm sorry, I'm still speaking. I still have the floor. That are finally going to be moved in. People are going to be moved in, like, next month. Where were you when all of these things were happening? The food—I mean, I needed support from the council to continue to have a contract, continue to provide hot meals for homeless and for seniors that were isolated. Where was this? You know, where was the council? And I'm talking about Councilmember Weiss and Councilmember Keim—
That was my agenda item in 2020.
—because they actually voted against all of this, all of this. So here we are on the eve of an election, and they say, oh, we need some hours of staff time, so we can come up with a plan to wow the public that, gee, look what we're doing. So I'm sorry, I am not voting for this. This is absolutely electioneering. It should be outlawed, that anybody who's running for council should be asking for very, very valuable staff time, when you can't even—they don't even have enough people to answer the phone—to answer the phone. And what—why not get more people in the housing—housing department? Oh, because it's not relevant. It's just not relevant. And this is so disappointing to me. I don't think—in 24 years—yes, I've been on this council 24 years—that it's nothing like this has ever happened, so obvious. So, yeah, I get to hear comments on the left of me, comments to the right of me while I'm speaking, when the public is speaking, hearing all this buzz, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, all this very, you know, constant disrespect for the community when people are talking, when I'm talking. And I was very quiet when they spoke, I was. So I still have 3:53 whatever minutes. Councilmember Joyce.
I was just going to say that, you know, I was also confused a lot about this, but having now have the clarification that I have, I'm going to support the measure, because I'm going to use that staff time to inquire about policies that I think is going to actually solve the issue.
You're going to use the four hours, or more than four hours?
I'm going to use the time that's allotted.
Four hours. Okay, Councilmember Weiss.
I'm going to second the call for the question.
Let's vote. I don't—let's vote. No, I'm just—let's just vote.
Motion approved, four to one.
Thank you. Now we have—back to public communications on off-agenda items. On number 27, how many people do we have? Okay, let's go.
We have four speakers. Our first speaker is Leo J. Chapinski, Sr.
Oh, he left, yes.
Robert Espinoza. Robert Espinoza? Oh, he's coming down, to be followed by Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Jimmy Knott.
Hi, does you know me, Robert Espinoza?
Annabelle's granddad.
And thank you for having me, Mayor, councilmembers. Give me some time. Let's go back to the subject of reality, life and death. My granddaughter's anniversary is coming out in two weeks. I've been coming here to this council meetings for eight years. The same desk, the same podium, different faces. It's been eight years, and we're still on square one. What's happening to the priorities of the young, vulnerable, thousand children that are growing up in this city of ours? What's your priorities? People—kids are dying. Put yourself in the smite—put yourself in the here in the podium. Eight years. What would you do? Would I be happy with you? I would be kind of upset, because eight years. Come on, man, you guys. Priorities are to protect the vulnerable. There's a lot of predators out there with nefarious intentions, you know? Even the wild—the wild animals out there protect their—they'll die for their—for their babies. I'm asking you for compassion as humans, your fathers, uncles, aunts, grandmothers. What's your compassion for protecting the vulnerable in Oceanside? That's the future of our city. Please, I ask you guys, have compassion, hope, love, something that we need more in this world, you know? We're talking all this—earlier I was here, you guys are taking photographs, laughing and stuff. I'm over there, I'm not celebrating. I'm contemplating about my granddaughter's anniversary coming back up again. So I ask you guys, as a human, to have compassion, to have solutions. I belong to SOS. We have solutions. Listen to the grassroots, you know? We've fallen there for so many years. You know, trust Jesse. My granddaughter knew Jesse. My granddaughter knew her mother. They consulted my daughter. As you know, she wasn't a gang member. She wasn't a drug addict. She was just a product of the environment she was brought. So I ask for compassion and have some—give us—the—we have the ability, SOS, to do it.
Thank you.
I know, I know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy?
Yes, I'm ready. You know, I'm kind of a dumbbell, you know, surprisingly to myself. Sometimes I look down and I saw quality of life, and I thought you were talking about the homeless. But you're not. You're talking about breakfast views, protecting breakfast views. Now you have a big stirrup in this town, you know, we got them out of your sight, you know? And now it's time to beef up law enforcement, some means to do it, in order to, you know, I don't know, gas them, put them on buses, get them out of town. And this can be done pretty quickly with the right kind of template. Now, what does that sound like to you? And here this man is begging for compassion. Ah, you know, it's simple, you know? I was thirsty, and you gave me to drink. I was naked, and you clothed me. You gave me a shelter. That's what you should be figuring out. This is not rocket science. Other cities have done it, other countries have done it. There's ways of doing it that involve good design, creativity, alternative land use, alternative housing, and not buying into the BIA and Caltrans notion of what this city should become. We have riches here. We have views. We have a beautiful place. You all built an access, you know, for me to get down from Ash Street, down right onto the beach, right there. And I got to experience the old Oceanside that I knew way back. I like to body surf. I still catch the inshore slop. I was able to do that this week. You know, that's quality of life. So you are doing it, but you got such a piecemeal idea. Open up. Design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Mayor, councilmembers, this week, we had a horrible incident down in the harbor. We have not heard from the diocese tonight any reports about that. We have not heard an update about the victims that are involved. I wish that we would have a report on that. We should have had the police chief here giving us an update. We didn't. I feel sorry for our community for that. Another thing I'm sorry about is, once again, I guess for a update on the appointments for our councilmembers on what commissions that we have for—what are you pointing to? Who's our League of Cities representative? Why haven't we heard from anything going on up there? State of California has taken and trying to assert our power, our municipal power. We could join together with the other cities and file against the State of California in court. cities and file against this state of California and court for taking and trying to take away municipal power. All the cities together, that would be a constitutional case that could go to the Supreme Court, and we could gain back what powers they took from us. But what do I hear? What do I see? Crickets. This needs change. Because you complain about something, but yet I see nothing, I hear nothing. It only takes a voice. It only takes a couple of words. It only takes someone to step forward to say, please, listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And no other public requests to speak on off-agenda, off-agenda items. Okay. So we are now on general councilmember comments. And actually, I'd like to ask Mr. Borrego, who was at the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee, to give us an update. Thank you, Jimmy. We had to wait until this time to be able to do so. Mr. Borrego.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, as he did mention, I did make a statement at the last Harbor Beaches Advisory Committee acknowledging the incident, and of course, sharing our office's condolences to the families of those who were victimized during that event. I can't share the details of the ongoing investigation, because it is an ongoing investigation. But I can assure you that it is a top priority of our police department. I expect that they will eventually solve this crime, hopefully sooner rather than later, and have the perpetrators brought to justice.
Right. And you have authorized additional patrols and?
Yes, we have authorized some additional patrols down in the harbor in response to that incident and some others that have occurred out there recently as well. And we will be looking at some long-term solutions to address the issues that are currently being experienced down there.
Thank you. And I believe you, what you said was, you were not going to tolerate any more of this kind of violence, that you were going to do
We will certainly not tolerate that.
— everything possible. And I want to echo those, the comments that you made at the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Commission. Thank you very much for being there and for making that statement at the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee. Any other, any requests from councilmembers for comments? Councilmember Joyce?
I would just say, is it listed? It's probably not listed anywhere in one list. You'd have to go back to what the council meeting, when we did appointments. But on each of the, on each of the commissions, it should say who the liaison is on each commission's website. I think it does. I'm not sure. If it doesn't, can we make sure that that's fixed?
We would be happy to do that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I see no other requests to speak.
I'm sorry, I did have one more, just in that same vein. I want to really thank staff, because we had had lots of comments and questions. I talked to lots of folks that had questions about how they get in touch with commissions, because the commissions do such amazing work. And they wanted to be able to email the commissioners directly. And that's not a system that we had up in place. Up until very recently, staff worked on it with all the commissions. And now you can email one email address for the commission, and all the commissioners will receive the email. So it's a really cool update. I think it's a great accessibility and transparent step for the city. So I appreciate staff's work on that.
Yes, it's great. Still not used to the new look of the agendas, though, I have to say. Yes, Mr. Borrego?
If I could make a statement to that. So as many of you who follow these meetings understand, we did transition to an electronic agenda system. I will say that it's saved an immense amount of staff time in processing the agendas. That said, we do understand that the next step in this process is to review the format and the manner in which the material is presented electronically. And we will be making some fixes to make it more user-friendly. That's our next step in the process. So more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next meeting, which is September 11th, 2024, 3:30. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.